Everyone, welcome to the Titusville City Council Meeting of February 27, 2018 at 6:30. We have a quorum. I'll declare this meeting in order. Do we have a minister who would like to say, ma'am? Please come up, the invocation.
I apologize for my attire this evening.
You look lovely.
Well, thank you, kind sir. That was very politically correct of you.
That's why I'm here.
I know. Our church was broken into a week ago by vandals who did a decent amount of destruction, and the police did a wonderful job of responding to that, but we've been cleaning for the last week. So, I apologize for not being more formal, but I invite you all to bow your heads with me, please.
Not at all. Thank you, ma'am.
God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here together this evening. The matters before this council, previous to this time and also in this meeting, Lord, are weighty matters of how we are fair as a community to each other and how we protect each other. You have called us to care about each other in ways that are deep and are grounded in Your abiding love, and we ask that as this evening's meeting occurs, Lord, that You would help Your peace, Your wisdom, and Your hope prevail. All these things we pray in Your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Clerk, would you please read the procedure for public comment?
I apologize. I wasn't ready for that one.
I'm sorry.
Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on cause or judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Sign-up and oath cards are located on the table in the back of the chamber. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens are given three minutes to speak on all items.
Our next item is minutes. I understand we have a card?
Yes, sir. Stan Johnston.
Please come up.
You're probably tired of having me up here. My name is Stan Johnston, 860.7 Avenue. I have two items regarding the meeting minutes. The meeting minutes of February 13. The mayor's report before it says refers to the council meeting on January 27. January 27 is a Saturday, so I'd like something done about that. Number two is I'm requesting council members to read their minutes. On February 8, that's a long time ago, I spoke with the city clerk's office regarding deficiency to the meeting minutes of January 9. On February 9, I did a follow-up, sent to council members about the deficiencies in the meeting minutes, and I asked for the end writing and also for city council members to call me to add meeting minutes, about millions and millions, millions and millions, millions of dollars, bankruptcy, all kinds of other issues that had to do with the council meeting of January 9. That was unanimously turned down as the meetings were accepted without these minutes. And then on the next, the council meeting, the last council meeting, we talked about, spoke about the same issue, using the words bankruptcy, city's going to lose its bond rating and so forth. So, this was an important issue, and I believe, in my experience, my opinion, is that when you have millions and millions, millions and millions, millions of dollars, 74.5 million in unfunded liability, 3.5 million in annual contribution to a trust fund, about one hour of discussion of that, and nothing's in the meeting minutes, and council unanimously approved it. Still, I don't know if any of us even read the minutes yet, but one council member, when I wrote about it, said that they've read it and it's in there, but it's not. So, I'm asking council to read the minutes. It's important. And in this case especially is that when we're talking about all these millions of dollars, is that it's a big item. I mean, it's talked about, we're talking about bankruptcy, and that's the word, what, last meeting was where you used the word. On this same issue, the word was used, "City may become bankrupt on this issue." So, I think in conclusion, I'm asking you to please read the meeting minutes and take care of item number one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other cards?
No, sir.
Thank you. Number five is reserves for presentations. We have no further.
Sir, I believe you need to do a motion for the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the first time we've ever had a card on the meeting minutes since I've been here. It kind of threw me for a loop, but we need approval of the minutes on January 23 and February 13.
I'd move to approve the minutes of January 23 and February 13, 2018.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I, second, but I do want to request that that date is changed, because that was, I think, the Saturday of our community conversation, so it just needs to be that date of that council meeting. But other than that, yes, second.
Okay. We have a second. Does the motion hold? Does the motion hold?
Yes.
Thank you. So, that will be changed. All those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Special recognitions and presentations. We have no further presentations. Letters of appreciation. City manager?
Yes, sir. For the record, I'd like to read the letters of appreciation received for the following employees. In the community development section, Mandy Lamoth, Samantha Sorio, Len Salz, Bradley Parish. From the building department, Steve Adams, Mariana Strova from Neighborhood Services, Terry Franklin, Rosemary Coney, Ibis Bernardi, and Tracy Davis. And our economic development department, Ms. Edie McCall.
Okay, thank you. Number six is boards and commissions. It's the city manager.
Ms. Lindsay Bamberg submitted her resignation effective 15 February 2018. There are no other applications on file, therefore our staff will advertise for the vacancy. Staff's recommendation is to accept the resignation of ultimate member Lindsay Bamberg.
Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the resignation of Lindsay Bamberg.
Have a second, please. Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like, sign. Passes unanimously. Number seven, petitions and requests from the public present. Are there anybody from the public who would like to speak on any subject that is not on this agenda?
Stan Johnston, 860.7 Avenue. Thank you for this opportunity to address council. I don't think you want to hear me, but I'm not here to talk behind someone's back. I will be sending a DVD of last council meeting and this council meeting to Mr. Rice, who I was speaking of at the last meeting. So, what I was talking about is that I was told by a city official last week that the police determined that I was a threat when I was up here and that I was removed. Well, I'm saying to you is that police never said that to me, and as far as I'm concerned, it's humiliating and insulting to me and my family and to any legacy that I leave behind that I was a threat to somebody while I was up here. So, I believe that Officer Lau is a good and decent man, and he's a wonderful person. However, I believe that our city manager, what he did was as a matter of revenge, because I asked him for his resignation before the council members, is that I believe as a matter of revenge that he gave Officer Lau special instructions to remove me from this podium, this council chambers. So, that's why I'm bringing this to your attention. And apparently, I think that the council should be interested when I say that Woody Rice is responsible for hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money being wasted. I think you should be interested. I think that, it's my opinion, it's my experience, that you should have said, "Hey, Stan Johnston, go ahead and speak another 20 seconds of that meeting to go ahead and finish it up." So, I'm going to tell you what I was going to say at this, is that, and that was the part about Mr. Larisse here, is that I believe he was responsible for giving instructions to Officer Lau to have me removed. It was a very interesting thing, and I understand what you know is that I went ahead, I sued in court for what had happened, and it was something that was done out-of-court settlement. The city paid for my attorney fees. City paid for my attorney. City paid for court costs. And city probably suffered, I don't know, thousands and thousands of dollars because they had to redo a bunch of council items, agenda items that were on that agenda, because council was, my understanding is, acting out of the sunshine when I was removed and this meeting continued without my presence. So, please, please, I want you to consider what's going on, and these hundreds of thousands of dollars should be of interest to this council. Should be, and they'll come up again. Thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So, for clarity, Mr. Johnston just levied an accusation of revenge and illegal acts and so forth and so on, specifically aimed at our city manager, which at best is slanderous. Our city manager's character is above board. As a reminder, he's a retired colonel from the United States Air, or United States Army. He serves his off, he serves his position with both integrity and the finest character, and I take such comments as totally out of line and out of order for this chamber.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next item is the, are there any other speakers on their petitions and requests, please?
Peter Stazinski from 2151 Palomino Drive. I just want to clarify, I missed the last meeting, and I guess you voted on the marijuana dispensaries on the 13th, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And there was two votes no on that, but I'm glad to see that that went through because it's going to be a huge help for people in this community that are in serious pain, and it will get them off of some of these chemical drugs and on something that's more natural. And I just wish the two that voted no could see that people that suffer in so much pain have to go through this with all of these artificial chemicals and everything, and now there's a natural alternative. And I just hope that through people that voted no on this never experienced the pain and suffering that a lot of people with cancer and with what I have, my MS, my wife that was hit by a car, you don't have to go through the pain that we have to go through every day, every second of every day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that wishes to speak?
I'm Gail Stazinski at 2151 Palomino Drive here in Titusville, and I just wanted to say thank you. And I am, it's nice to know that we can all, myself included, think of others besides ourselves and put them before us. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak? Not seeing anyone. I'll go on to the next items. That's the consent agenda. Clerk, have, if any cards been submitted for the consent agenda? If so, which items?
Item D.
Item B?
D.
D?
Yes, it's locked.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, are there any items that you would like pulled? Anyone on council?
I would like to pull E, only because I think it would be good for our citizens to have a little more information on what is actually going to be done. There was a post on Facebook basically saying that the city had dropped the ball and that this was not going to happen. And I would like our citizens to know that Facebook is not always accurate. Don't believe everything you read on Facebook. So, I'd like Mr. Cook to talk to us a little bit about it.
Okay. Who would you like to?
That person back there.
Oh, Mr. Cook. I thought you said Mr. Kirk, and I don't, I don't know, Mr. Kirk isn't here. Sir, would you like to come up? Want to speak about that now? Oh, well, no, we'll wait till, we'll wait till it gets through. Okay. At this point, I'll pull a request for item D and E, and they will be heard separately after the following, immediately following the consent agenda. City manager, will you read the rest of the items without items D and E?
Sure. Consent agenda, item 8A. Appropriate and approve the use of federal forfeiture funds to purchase upgraded traffic radars, ancillary equipment in the amount of $10,320. One stationary radar at a cost of $1,395. Appropriate and approve the use of federal forfeiture funds to purchase one Stalker brand digital roadside message center with trailer at $17,684, and approve the attached budget amendment form. Consent agenda, item 8B. Approve the request to transfer $5,000 from the car seat donation restricted fund balance into the fire department's operating budget to purchase needed supplies for the public education and child occupant protection program. Consent agenda, item 8C. Approve resolution 4-2018 authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a Florida job growth grant fund public infrastructure grant agreement between the state of Florida Department Economic Opportunity and the city of Titusville, and approve the associated budget amendment. Consent agenda, item 8F. Approve the award of contract to DRMP Incorporated of Orlando, Florida to provide construction engineering inspection services for the Hopkins Avenue RRR improvement project in the amount of $179,667.53, and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. Consent agenda, item 8G. Accept the easement from Michael J. Cutrib, MDPA, for the Cutrib I Institute on South Washington Avenue. Consent agenda, item 8H. Accept the utility easements for water and sewer infrastructure from Solomera Grand LLC for the Solomera Grand Apartments on Knox-McCrave Drive. Consent agenda, item 8I. Accept easement from Barn Light Real Estate LLC for Bricks Project Brewery on South Washington Avenue. Consent agenda, item 8J. Approve staff's effort in coordinating the 2018 Red, White, and Boom City of Titusville Fourth of July celebration. And consent agenda, item 8K. Authorize the mayor to sign the assignment of the easement to Brevard County to construct a bus shelter at Titus Landing pursuant to the final review by the city attorney.
All right. We will call for a vote at this point for items A to C and F to K.
And this will require a roll call, sir, because there was a resolution in there.
Oh, you need a motion first.
Yes. Please, we need a motion.
Then we need a roll call. We would, I would move to approve.
A to C and F to K.
A through C and F to K. Approved.
I have a motion and a second. This, any discussion I seen on, there are, there is a resolution, so we'll have a roll call. Well, please, clerk.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Okay. That passes unanimously, and I will deal with item D. Advisability regarding fence regulations. Do we have discussion on this item?
Yes, sir. We have a card on this item.
Okay. Please come up.
We have two cards. It's Brandy Higgins and Eric Hall, I believe.
Hi, I'm Brandy Higgins. We're not really sure what we're doing here, so hopefully you'll be patient with us.
Relax. Sometimes we're not sure what we're doing.
Okay, great. It makes us all on the same page then.
But you do need to give your names and addresses, please.
Okay. We are from 613 Hallow Glen Drive in Titusville, and we are for the agenda item 8D because we are experiencing a lot of hardship and inconvenience trying to get a fence on our lot, and it feels very unfair because all of the other fences, all the other houses in our subdivision have very similar, if not the exact same, setup as our house, and they're considered corner lots, and our house is not, and we pay it extra for what we were told was a corner house. So, if you guys could please approve them to be able to look at that law, because it doesn't make sense, and it's been a pain in the butt for us. I don't know if I can say butt, sorry.
Did you wish to speak also, sir?
Sorry.
Did you wish to speak also?
Yeah, she kept it on.
She's got it all, huh?
I speak Trump all the time, as you said.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the, I see no lights on for questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion on item D.
Motion to approve item R D on the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Well, I didn't, I didn't ask, yeah, nobody, nobody voted opposed. Okay. Passes unanimously. Next item, E. E. Item E. Anybody, any cards on it, clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion on this item?
Mayor, this is one I was hoping Mr. Cook would talk a little bit about, just so that, just so that some of our citizens would be informed about what we are doing on Hopkins Avenue.
Okay.
No, sure. Hopkins Avenue is a complete street corridor. What this action is, is the LEP agreement, the local AC program, FDOT funding, the overhaul of the asphalt portion of the roadway, adding ADA improvements to all the intersections, redoing our loops on our signals, adding the new bike lanes to the roadway, those features that go inside the curb lines. So, I think what, what probably, the difference between what we started with in the design to now is the scope change to take away not redoing every piece of concrete down through the Hopkins corridor. The original scope was we were going to redo every driveway, every sidewalk. So, I think it's a beneficial change that the scope modified to what it is now. To be honest with you, we probably cut two full years off the construction time, and the impact to the businesses will be greatly reduced. We're at a 200-day contract duration now from probably a close to 700-day contract duration. So, that's a lot of time. The businesses won't have to deal with roads being closed and the dust of road construction. We are still connecting sidewalks where there are two gaps. We are still going to do landscape improvements, so the concept will still be constructed fully with a little less impact, less non-beneficial impact. So, and like I said, this agenda item is to set the scale for the LAP agreement, which is the DOT side.
So, the contract for the, the construction right now would be about two years?
No, about 200 days.
200 days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We got the, our calculated schedule with DOT right now is at 200 days.
So, when would the request for bids go out?
As soon, this contract has to get executed by the state and by the mayor after this action. They'll issue a notice of proceed probably within the month, the next month. We'll bid and hopefully be back to award in April, early May.
Okay.
So.
So, by this time next year, we should have a new Hopkins Avenue.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
And more improved.
Yep.
Hopkins Avenue.
Yes.
What does the total construction cost?
This section's about 1.6 million. We do have another 200 in sidewalk infill and another probably 500 in landscaping, so close to 3 million total investment.
And how does that break down? Do you have the numbers? Who's paying for?
The 1.6 million is federally funded, 100%. The city's paying for the CEI services, which was item F on this agenda. Impact fees are paying for the sidewalk infills, and landscape mitigation will pay for the landscaping. So, the general fund pays for a very small portion. We can break that down.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Go right ahead.
Is there a reduction in cost because of this new plan that you're seeing as well?
Yeah. Our initial estimate for the full game it was 5.4 million total.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So, so now, yeah, it's two-plus million. A little dated for, we estimates, but yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Cook or staff? Yes, sir.
And this will include the bicycle paths on the side?
Yeah. Yeah. There'll be a similar stuff to State Road 50, where you have between a four and a six-foot lane for bike dedication on both sides. The middle lane will be fixed to a 10-foot. The travel lanes will be crunched down a little bit. The road is excessively wide right now. So, you'll see some spots you'll have a double-stripe line separating others will have a single, depending on how wide the lane is, but.
Okay. And some of the questions that I get about bicycle paths, lanes, whatever you call them, you know, Highway 50 looks pretty normal, and we can kind of figure that out. And there's some others where I end up going the wrong way on the street because I'm not quite sure what's there. This is going to be the pretty simple kind.
Yeah. This would be the directional, the one on each side of the road, so you'll be traveling with traffic normally.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions anybody has? If not, I'll ask for a If not, I'll ask for a motion on this.
Move to approve consent agenda item E, the FDOT LAP agreement.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like song, passes unanimously. Thank you.
We need a roll call.
Oh, we need a roll call on that one?
It has a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Sorry, okay, if you will, clerk.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Again, thank you. Next item is item nine, ordinances, second reading, public hearing, and related action. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, this is ordinance number six, two thousand and eighteen, relating to wetlands and conservation areas. Ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending chapter twenty-nine, special districts and overlays of the Code of Ordinances and Land Development Regulations, specifically amending Article Four Wetland and Conservation Area, WCA, Section twenty-nine seventy-one intent, to expand protection options for wetlands, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Plan and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action four zero. The city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations currently require that wetlands five acres or greater in size be designated as conservation land use and open space recreation OR zoning. In many instances, this has resulted in significant areas of wetlands being protected. However, the current option for designation of wetlands has limited the use of conservation subdivisions in which wetlands could be protected by conservation easements through the plating limitations. This option would provide an excellent measure of protection and flexibility for the property owners seeking to develop conservation subdivisions. Busaka is available to answer any questions that you may have on this item, and this is, is the second reading and final public hearing.
Any of council have any questions for Ms. Busaka or staff? Ms. Busaka, do you have any presentation that you'd like to make? I see none. Clerk, are there cards on this item?
We have one card. It's Kathleen Burson.
Please come up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you again. It's been a long time. I just kind of getting familiar with this, and I tried to get a little bit of an understanding from staff. I wish we had some more time, if there was any way of, you know, putting us off to the next meeting for voting, or maybe get a better understanding from Ms. Busaka. What I, you know, I've dealt with the conservation lands for years, way before I was on city council, you know, it was since two thousand, I believe since two thousand and five, that myself and other community members, citizens, have addressed this issue and tried to put a, you know, emphasis on protecting what we have left in the city. You know, we've fought for the little conservation areas, we've fought for the big ones, we've won some, we've lost some, but we've got some really critical areas that are coming to the forefront because everything else is developed now, and that's at central core in Titusville. We call one the Singleton Wetland, which runs from South Street up Long Singleton on the west side, up to the, you know, Garden Street, you're familiar with it, Ms. Nelson. And then the other one is just south of there, and that is a huge, both of them are, I think, over three hundred acres, and they're just huge untapped areas that don't have roads running through them. They weren't platted for roads, they weren't intended to be developed, there was a conservation land use put on these areas, and the one, the, the south one is the, runs from Harrison Street up north to South Street. So Harrison to South Street, then from South Street to Garden Street. It's just this huge core that was, was never platted. Lots of lands in the city, that lands have not been developed, were once platted for roadways. So the intention was to keep this under conservation with a very low density development. It was given a conservation density already of one unit per five acres. My whole neighborhood is one unit per five acres, I'm sorry, not one unit per five acres. We have lots that are one acres, lots that are five acres, lots that are ten acres, and it's a unique area of Titusville, and it's directly adjoined to these conservation areas. I just would really like to have a little more time to take a look at the ordinance, to maybe contribute something to it that might contribute to the overall protection of these areas, and like I said, there's already a density allowed to them, which is sensitive to the, the conservation, so, thank you.
Any questions for the speaker? I see none. If you will call the next card, please.
We have no more cards.
Okay. Close the public hearing, council discussion. Okay, sir, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. You know, Ms. Burson's passionate about conservation areas, and has put a lot of work, I think, in a long-term perspective for that. That's right up your alley, without a doubt, and so my question would be, would there be any, what would be the impact of potentially allowing for two more weeks? Do we have to repost it? Is it financially going to cost? Is it well worth the cost to, you know, get another opinion on it? Not to take away from the folks that serve on the board currently and rendered a decision on this, it's just, you know, another community member who's, you know, passionate about it, so.
This could be tabled to a time certain, to the next two weeks. There is, to my knowledge, nothing pending that is related to this. I just want to assure all of you that we're not suggesting that we do away with the open space recreation land use. What we have seen is that there are wetlands in the middle of uplands, and when the option is to continue to re, keep those as OR, the land uses that the zoning allows includes golf courses, parks, and tennis clubs, which means that someone can take those wetlands and make them into a golf course, where if they have the option to transfer the densities up, out of the wetlands, then put a conservation easement, then the wetland stays forever. So we think that this adds a great deal of protection, and when I spoke with Ms. Burson, she was interested in additional protection on uplands, but the OR does not currently protect uplands because OR is not, uplands are not designated OR. So uplands are not impacted whether it's up, whether it's this conservation easement over the OR. However, that being said, there's no issue for staff to table this.
Any further discussion by council? I'm seeing any, anybody like to make a motion?
Well, can I, can I discuss it as opposed to making a motion?
Yes, you may.
Sorry. Peggy, when we were talking the other day, basically you were saying this would not change anything, but if an easement was created with this overlay, is it basically an additional layer of protection for the wetlands?
Well, yes, ma'am, but what it would allow is it would allow someone who had a wetland as part of a subdivision to actually designate that area as a conservation easement in perpetuity, and transfer the one unit per five acres off of the property, which is, in my opinion, a better idea, because you're not putting a road in septic tanks and fill and all these things in wetlands. It also allows the subdivision to include the wetlands as open space, but not that it can be developed. Today, if there were a subdivision and part of it were zoned OR, and part of it were zoned R one B, they could go in and put a tennis club in that wetland.
Okay.
Because the zoning would allow that. In conservation easement, they get the benefit of the open space, but they are not allowed to develop it.
And obviously, once the easement goes to St. John's, we, we never get it back.
It's been my experience, that's true.
Feel better? Feel better?
Thank you. Those, these are the concerns that I have, that I just want to understand better, because, for example, why would someone choose to do that when they could just still develop it under the current zoning? I'm, I'm not sure why someone would choose that.
A conservation subdivision allows you to make smaller lots without rezoning it, and that's to the advantage of the developer, because they put, spend less money in asphalt, they spend less money in pipes. In addition to that, that seems to be the way that the future is going. People don't want to mow lawns, they want smaller homes. So what that allows, but a conservation subdivision requires a percentage of open space be preserved. So if they can include the wetlands in that conservation, open space requirement, it encourages them to make these conservation subdivisions, which I believe is a preferable way to develop. If we can get the same number of lots and use up less land, why wouldn't we do that? Whether it's uplands we're developing or wetlands we're developing, more of it staying in open space.
Yeah, I understand that part, and I do agree that, you know, clustering density is good, but if it's, you're saying you're just transferring the one per five, or you, can you change the, can you change the density?
If you do a rezoning.
Okay, so you have to do a rezoning.
Yes, ma'am, it's, the conservation subdivision doesn't give them any additional density, it simply allows them to cluster those.
Okay, okay.
It sounded sort of like a win-win for our community.
Yeah.
And I'm like you, I had to come in and ask, because I was, I read it, and I'm like, okay, Ms. Busaka, what, what am I reading here?
Yeah, I'm starting to get it, but it was just tonight that I first got the intro to it, and I just have been, you know, doing life, so I wasn't paying attention to the council agenda, so.
It sounds like, it sounds like a good deal for us.
Yeah, well, I hope someone, I hope there's, what kind of incentives are there for someone to choose that? I mean, besides the density, what are you putting in it?
What we're seeing is developers want smaller lots, because people want to buy smaller lots.
Okay.
And they want them because they're putting in less miles of road, less miles of pipe, and so they can have a subdivision with the same number of units, and it's less cost. It's less cost for them, they pass that on, hopefully, to the people, and I don't know if you've seen, but national trends are that lots are getting smaller.
So that's the only incentive to encourage from just going with a rezoning?
Yes. It, well, that's their incentive. Some people actually also feel that there is some marketability to having large backyards that you don't have to maintain, but you can enjoy, and that's what happens in a conservation subdivision. The, either if the wetland is done as a, as a conservation easement, then that's maintained that way, or the homeowners association maintains the general property. And that's what the, one of the, the pluses of these conservation subdivisions are, you can have a big backyard and not, neighbors not close by, but you don't have to do the mowing. It's a lot like having a golf course. That's why people like golf courses.
Yeah, people like open space more than, than they like golf, that's very true.
Yeah.
People live on golf courses for the view, not the, in the open space, not so much the golf. What's the potential then in the future, since this wasn't intended to address wetlands, to give more protections in these large conservation areas to protect both?
Wetlands and uplands?
Yes.
I think the best way to handle that is as we're going through the comprehensive plan evaluation and appraisal report, and we're looking at redoing our comprehensive plan, I think that our conservation element should address uplands, which it does not currently. So I think that that is something that's missing, and that would be the best way to handle that, in my opinion, because that's what we had to do to preserve these wetlands through a conservation easement, we had to go to the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have another card on this, so clerk, if you will call the card, please. Person?
Gail Stwensy, Stwensy, I'm probably pronouncing that incorrect.
Is it possible to hold the hearing for the two weeks to find out if there is sweetwater aquifer on the land?
Ma'am, we're not talking about a specific piece of property. We're talking about a policy that would impact properties when they come in for development. So I would not be able to tell you anything about the aquifer, because it's not a specific piece of property.
Okay, but you're talking about building on the land, correct?
What we're trying to do is preserve wetlands.
Okay, got it. Cool, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further cards, clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll call for a motion.
I would move to approve ordinance number six dash two thousand and eighteen relating to wetlands and conservation areas.
I have a second, please. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say, oh, roll call.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is ordinance number seven, two thousand and eighteen, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, revoking the economic development adverbal tax abatement to project landmark Lockheed Martin Corporation, and providing for an effective date.
Due to anticipated hiring and investment schedule not materializing as planned at one five one five Chaffee Drive in Titusville, the company is requesting to withdraw the adverbal tax abatement program, ordinance twenty-four dash two thousand and fifteen, which passed on fourteen July two thousand and fifteen. Copy of the company's written request is part of your packet. This is the second reading and public hearing.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Any questions for staff from, from council? I see none. Any comments from staff? I have none. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing, council discussion. I see no lights, I'll call for a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number seven dash two thousand and eighteen, revoking the economic development adverbal tax exemption to project landmark.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, roll call, vote, please, clerk.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Next item, G.
Item C is ordinance number eight, two thousand and eighteen, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances and Land Development Regulations, prohibiting shipping containers for use as residential structures by creating section six ninety-two prohibition of shipping containers for use as residential structures, and twenty-eight dash nineteen shipping containers, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Plan and Zoning Commission recommended denial of this action five zero. On twelve December two thousand and seventeen, council approved advisability to develop an ordinance regulating shipping containers for use as residential structures, directing staff to prohibit the use of these containers. The attached ordinance prohibits the use of shipping containers for any residential structure. The Plan and Zoning Commission recommended denial five zero of the ordinance as written. The Plan and Zoning Commission recommended an alternative with a vote of five zero for establishing a six-month moratorium in order to allow staff time to explore options and regulations. Topics of discussion by the P and Z included defining particular exceptions to allow approved shipping containers which meet minimum housing standards, to be used as temporary use related to emergencies, where mobile homes are allowed, on properties larger than three to, or four acre, or three to five acres, and/or creating architectural guidelines to regulate the appearance of these structures. Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions. This is the second reading and public hearing.
Any comments from Ms. Busaka?
Only to say that, as an alternative, it was suggested that there be a six-month moratorium. We can accomplish the same thing by adopting the ordinance this evening. A six-month moratorium would require additional cost to the city, because there would be additional advertising, and it would take several weeks to advertise that and bring it back. advertising, and it would take several weeks to advertise that and bring it back, where if council wished to put this in place this evening and then give us further direction, this would remain until we divided some, devise some other philosophy, but that's your, you know, as you wish, but that is one option that would save some money as opposed to the moratorium.
Any questions from council for Ms. Busaka? Member Stokel?
I was just going to say, I'm okay with approving the ordinance as written tonight.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
Can you help, just give some background, it's 5.0, what was the?
There were several concerns. One was that this housing may be usable during emergency situations. Now, in order to make a shipping container into a structure that can be used under the Florida Building Code, extensive renovations are required. The structure itself is made to be tossed around, and that's really not the issue, but we would have, there would have to be renovations done to meet the energy, there would have to be, there would have to be windows cut, there'll have to be insulation put in, there'll have to be plumbing, electrical, it's a very, it's not just a cheap fix. I know that you can read somewhere that you can purchase these for less than a regular house, and that may be true, but it is certainly not a $10,000, according to the building official, it's significantly more than that. So, one of the issues was the minimum, was to allow these to be used, and it says peculiar exceptions, and they meant to, as temporary uses. And I believe that in the event that there should be a major disaster and council wished to move forward to do that, there is a mechanism to allow this, I believe. I think that attorney would correct me if I'm not right on that. Also, people felt that with mobile homes would be allowed in areas that these could look like mobile homes on large lots. So I think that it was a strict prohibition, and people felt that there perhaps were options. We have some, have had a couple of questions from individuals who are interested in putting these into the city. So without this ordinance, it is possible that we would see those without any architectural guidelines.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Why would someone want to go with a shipping container and do all the things needed to make it livable instead of getting a mobile home? Why, why would we even look at that? Why would someone look at that as opposed to getting a mobile home?
I think that there's a certain amount of reusing existing, you know, things that people are going to throw away, I think. And I think that some people just like the idea that they can take something and make it their own and not have to buy something off of the shelf. And for those people who watch the tiny homes on television, maybe they're intrigued by that.
And these would perhaps be okay in mobile home parks?
Right now, they would not, because we require that, we have a definition for mobile home, and a mobile home meets a state requirement, because it, it has to meet the southern building, the Florida Building Code. And so there's a, there's a specific requirement, and a mobile home gets a tag, a license tag.
That's true.
Manufacturer, manufactured home has a different code, and it gets put in place like a regular house.
Okay, thank you. Member Nelson?
We discussed this yesterday. Seattle, Washington uses shipping containers for the homeless people out there, but that is set up in special areas of the city, and they're on a specific lot. And I might point out, the weather in Seattle is a little bit more temperate than it is here. I don't have a whole lot of 94-degree days out here, so that's, it may not be practical here, but, I mean, it's something that bears looking into. But I'm, I'm okay with going ahead and passing it and then letting staff look at it.
Anyone else wish to, who asked staff a question from council? I see no lights. Are there any more cards on this, clerk?
We have no cards.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from council? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Move to approve ordinance number 8-2818 prohibiting shipping containers for residential use.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please, clerk.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Diesel.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next is, let's see, which one are we doing here? Okay, item D.
Yes, item D is ordinance number 9, 2018, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida amending the code of ordinances to modify expiration dates for conditional use permits meeting specific criteria by amending section 3477 revocation of conditional use permits, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of this action 5.0. Recently, a citizen requested that due to the slow economic recovery, the code be amended to allow additional extensions for CUPs in order to construct the proposed projects. The attached ordinance allows an extension for CUPs meeting specified criteria after receipt of written request. This is the second hearing and public hearing.
Any, any comments from staff?
Well, I would just, there'd been, I'm sure there's been a question about why the planning and zoning board unanimously recommended against this, and their concern was that conditional use permits have expiration dates for a reason, that the changes could have occurred, and that both the Planning and Zoning Commission and council should have the opportunity to analyze projects after a certain number of years. And so they felt that having this open-ended extension was not appropriate. Now, I would comment that planning and zoning have had these comments about conditional use permits for a number of years. This is not a new comment from them.
Counsel, have any further questions from, for staff? Clerk, are there any cards on this?
We have two cards.
Please call them, first one.
Danny Treader. And then Woody Rice.
Hi, I'm Danny Treader, 2110 South Washington Avenue. I may start coughing, I've been sick for about six days, so just bear with me. Wanted to update you with what's going on at the Rio Lago site. Been still working with the same developer, Ted talked with you. They're setting up an office, and they've met with a local architect, they plan on hiring if this goes through, and they've also said the same thing about a local site company. They're planning on spending approximately 20, 20 million or more. If we get approval tonight, they're ready to sign contracts with these companies. I do understand what Planning and Zoning has said. Over the last, basically 12 years, after each two-year cycle, I've come in and come to council, and council has, you know, the area hasn't changed since we've done the work that we needed to do for the conditional use permit. The mall has been added, which has been a great blessing to the area. A little more history, I was about ready to break ground back when the market collapsed. I had paid for my water use permits, I'd paid for, I think even a clearing permit, we even had the, that fencing stuff that goes around the property, that black fencing, so over the years, with various councils, I've never had any of the neighbors or anybody come in and say, "Oh, you know, please don't give them an extension." I worked with council the last time in moving the building 25 feet even closer to the road for environmental reasons, and, and the situation we had last time, I only had, I didn't realize I only had three days, from, three or four days from when the meeting happened, to get in that paperwork. I just didn't understand, and I thought I had two years, but it was more like four days. So, I did talk with the developer, and we did talk about one year, but with the feasibility studies they have to do with a project of this size, it's more like two years is what's going to be really needed. The, the loans and that, the, the planning part only takes, they can do the architecture plan in six months, they can do the site work probably in another, the same, they can do that during the same amount of time, but it's the feasibility studies for a loan of this size that takes the abundance of time. Over the, just a little bit more history.
Time's up. Do you need some more time?
Yes, please. A couple more minutes, please.
Two more minutes?
Move to give him two more minutes.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Unanimous, you go.
So it wasn't like, you know, 10 or 12 years ago, we just stopped. Even up to about three years ago, I put in approximately about $40,000 to $50,000 in a living shoreline with the Koina Rock reventment and all that. And so I've met with, you know, site development people, I've met with, you know, various people to keep everything going, and it, it wasn't, you know, I've got approximately, not counting the building, the land costs, but just in the architectural plans and site plans, four to $450,000 or so in that. So as far as, you know, over the years, we have been making progress, it's just the markets finally come about where we can do this development, and we would like another two-year extension, and I'd just ask you if you have any questions, if you could ask, ask of me.
Okay, anything, any questions?
Danny, you promised two years?
Well, the developer, that they believe that they can finish and do all this within this amount of time, yes.
Okay.
Any, yes, Member Stokel?
This may be from Ms. Busaka. Under section C, if I'm, I'm reading this correctly, it's scratched out two-year and put in three-year extension. When, so when does this actually expire? Because it looks like it, the expiration dates between January 1st, 2014 to December, with one additional three-year extension as this reads. To me, that means it would expire December 2017. Am I not reading that right?
There would be, at, at this time, the, and this is kind of hard, you have to follow the bouncing ball here.
Okay.
But at the, when the provision for the 20, for 2014 would have expired at 2016, but they were given it one additional two-year extension, which went to 2018. So now this would go to 2019, and Mr. Treader is asking it go to 2020.
Okay, so, and that would be accomplished with this verbiage of changing, scratching out two years?
It would not.
Okay, so we?
It would have to go to one additional four-year extension.
Okay, so we would need to amend that?
That's correct. Because when it says one additional, that means there'd already been one two-year extension.
Right.
So this is the second, except this would be a four-year extension.
Okay. All right, that's what I was just wondering.
Any other questions? Yes, go right ahead.
I guess, simply put, we've had a few extensions, we're looking for more extension. When do you think you'll see movement? I think you said something about if we approve tonight, what happens next?
Well, they've, they've already got an office that they're setting up, and then, you know, and then they've already met with the architect, a local architect, and they're ready to sign papers with them and get all that stuff rolling. They're, they're ready to go.
So they'll, you know, kind of like we spoke about Hopkins a little while ago, we're here and ready to go, now we want to see some paving. Ready to go, we want to see you guys get something going here.
Right, well, I'm.
I know you are.
I'm, I'm, I hope it goes, starts tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none, thank you, sir. I have one question of staff. If this ordinance passes, it's, it's general in nature, right? Or is it specific to this property?
Yes, sir, it's general in nature.
Yeah, but if we see after a while that this is not a good idea, we could revoke this, I assume?
Sure, the amendment can be changed, but at that point, there's a question about what rights have you already given to someone, and withdrawing those rights leads you to...
But if that problem wasn't there, we could just revoke this, okay.
Correct. I, I think the attorney would be happy to discuss with you taking people's rights after you've made them, yeah.
I'm familiar with this. I've been, been around it a few times before, and I understand that. At any rate, will you call the next speaker, please?
The last card is Woody Rice.
Woody Rice, 505 Indian River Avenue. Good evening, and I want to take you back when this project started a little bit, and it was, you know, the economy was booming, everything was moving pretty quick, actually a little too, too quick on things. Mr. Treader made a substantial investment in engineering, architects, and even permits at that time. And then what happened? The economy fell apart. And it affected a lot of people in our community, it affected, the city laid off a lot of people during that timeframe where the economy fell apart, so it hurt everybody, including Mr. Treader. And who would have thought that over the last 10 years, Mr. Treader would have had to come back to this body time and time again, not asking for really anything special, he was just trying to preserve the rights that he already had at the time, waiting for the market to, to rebound and come back, as we all were waiting for the market to come back. Who would have thought it would take him that long? The difference this time is the market has turned around. The market is turning around. Investment in our local community is starting to be revitalized. You have the national outlook is, is a lot more positive. Tax cuts have prompted businesses to start reinvesting in, in local communities and states. And then just even looking locally, what, what has changed since the conception of this project? You have the zone here, the economic development zone, there's been a tremendous influx to our community, helping us pull sort of out of that economy. You also have the mall, which has been a great blessing. You see sort of the change in, in the look all around, or all around us. And this time, Mr. Treader is not waiting for the economy to turn around, he actually has a contract. That's the big difference for this project. The only thing we really need to move forward is this approval tonight for his contract to move forward, and I think we'll finally see Rio Lago come out of the ground. We think, all right, what, what's the next steps? If this goes through, it's permitting. We have to go back to permitting again. We have to not only permit to the city of Titusville, we have to re-permit through DOT, we have to re-permit to the St. John's River Water Management District, and we have to bring those plans up to current specifications and requirements. We're just trying to preserve the CUP special conditions, is all we're trying to accomplish tonight. The ordinance as written only gives Mr. Treader one more year, and I think that, that, that's a pretty aggressive schedule to get everything that needs to happen done. So I'm in agreement with Mr. Treader, I think the two-year will make this, go this time, we can move forward, and Lord knows that I don't want to be in front of this council again, and Mr. Treader doesn't want to be in front of this council again. I don't think staff wants to review this again, I know you guys don't want to consider this again, so we just really would appreciate your support tonight.
And as much as we love to see you guys, I understand what you're saying. Any questions for Mr. Rice? Yes, I see Vice Mayor?
Yes, and not so much a question, but a comment, and...
Uh, yes, and not so much a question, but a comment, and, uh, only because, uh, Mr. Rice is here. Um, I just want to make sure to, um, communicate that my own personal experience, uh, the character of Mr. Rice, again, is outstanding. He has had dedicated service to our, uh, city for a long time, uh, was a member of this council as well, uh, and I just wanted to take a moment, uh, and not tied to this project, but just, uh, a moment to recognize that the character of Mr. Rice, uh, I commend as outstanding, uh, and forthcoming in all that he does, uh, and anybody that would, uh, choose to make comment otherwise, I think is slanderous and misguided as well. So, uh, thank you for your service to the city, uh, and it's just nice to see you working on a project that, uh, where you can get this thing off the ground potentially, so. Thank you.
I know Mr. Rice a number of years, and I certainly support everything you just said, but, uh, we'll, we'll leave it at that. Uh, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any further discussion? Okay, uh, if someone would like to make a motion on this item? Oops, staff?
Sorry, I, I put my finger up too early, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that if the wording as written is not consistent with Mr. Tretter's request.
And?
Okay.
Does it, does it accomplish?
Mr. Tretter would like the, the wording to say, um, one additional four-year extension may be granted administratively.
Okay, we don't have a motion yet, so that can be included. If, if whoever makes the motion wants to do that, who would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number nine dash 2018, modifying the expiration dates for the conditional use permits, meeting specific criteria, um, and adding that the three-year extension should be a four-year extension.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Get her done. Uh, next is, uh, Item E.
This ordinance has been withdrawn by staff and will be re-advertised for future consideration.
Is any action necessary at this point?
No, sir.
All right. Item F?
Item F is ordinance number 17, 2018, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances related to restaurants, caterers, by amending the conditional uses in the planned industrial development PID zoning district, specifically amending Section 28 dash 52 Use Table and Section 28, 167 Restaurants, Caterers, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading and first public hearing. The second reading and final public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on 13 March, 2018. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action, 4-1.
Staff, any comment? Counsel, any questions of staff? Go ahead, Members Stokel.
Yep, I just wanted to know if you knew why there was one opposed to this ordinance?
I, as a matter of fact, I do know. The concern was that catering appears to be an industrial use as there's deliveries in and out, that it's similar to other industrial uses because people are not coming to a caterer, they are having the catering delivered, and they didn't feel that the conditional use permit was necessary.
Any more questions from counsel? Clerk, are there any cards on this?
No, sir.
We go to the next item, please, Item F? Nope, yes.
This is Item G, street renaming. This is the public hearing to consider a street renaming application number one dash 2017. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action, 5-0. Request has been made by a petitioner, Brent Shepherd, to rename Victor Space Boulevard, a public street between Columbia Boulevard, State Road 405, and Washington Avenue, US-1. Per Section 30 dash 240 of Land Development Regulations, staff mailed letters to all property owners abutting Victor Space Boulevard to provide notice of, of the public meetings. A map is attached which illustrates the street requested to be renamed. No objections have been received regarding this request. Comments to the Boulevard E1, 911, Titusville Public Works, and Titusville Police and Fire Department are attached.
Staff, any comments? Counsel, any questions for staff? I hear none. Clerk, are there any cards?
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion? I see none. I have a motion.
Make, go ahead, I'll make a motion for the street renaming number one dash 2017 from Victor Space Boulevard to Riverfront Center Boulevard.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
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 We need a roll call.
Is that a roll call? Okay, clerk, call a roll call.
Um, Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. Uh, next is Item I.
This item, Item E, is comprehensive plan amendment number one, 2017, relating to conservation land uses. An ordinance number 10, 2018, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan in the city of Titusville, by adopting the comprehensive plan amendment 2017, 01. Amending policy 1.16.2 of future land use element of the comprehensive plan relating to conservation land use, providing for severability and providing for effective date.
The Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, recommended approval of this action, 4-0. The city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations currently require that wetlands five acres or greater in size be designated as conservation land use in open space OR zoning. In many instances, this has resulted in significant areas of wetlands being protected. However, the limited options for designation of wetlands has limited the use of conservation subdivisions in which wetlands could be protected by a conservation easement through plat limitations. This option would provide an excellent measure of protection and flexibility for property owners seeking to develop conservation subdivisions. This is the second reading and final public hearing. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any comment?
This is the comprehensive plan amendment, which is consistent with the ordinance that was passed earlier.
Okay. Uh, any questions for staff? Counsel, see none. Uh, clerk, can you speak, any cards on this?
No, sir.
Uh, close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion? I see none. I have a motion.
I move to approve comprehensive plan amendment number one dash 2017 relating to conservation land use.
I have a second?
Second.
I'm, I'm not, I would ask, I don't see any ordinances or resolutions, so I'm going to say, I believe-
This is ordinance number 10, 2018, so roll a call.
Okay, roll call. Um, clerk, please call the, the roll call vote.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think we're on letter I at this point, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Item I is comprehensive plan amendment number 2017-02 and zoning code text amendment. This will include ordinance number 11, 2018, as well as ordinance number 12, 2018. I'll read both ordinances at this time. Ordinance number 11, 2018, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville, by adopting comprehensive plan amendment 2017-02, amending policy 1.21.1 of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan, to increase the maximum residential density in the downtown mixed-use land use downtown sub-district, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 12, 2018, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the land development regulations by increasing the density criteria in the downtown mixed-use DMU downtown sub-district, by amending Section 28, 324-C Density Intensity Standards Table, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action unanimously. CPA 2017-02 proposes to amend policy 1.21.1 of the future land use element by changing the maximum residential density from 20 dwellings units per acre to 30 dwellings units per acre within the downtown sub-district of the downtown mixed-use designation. The proposed CPA is consistent with the description of the downtown sub-district as consisting of higher-density mixed-use buildings. This policy will also implement the recommended land use development regulation amendment of the city of Titusville Economic Strategic Plan, which the city council adopted on 24 January, 2017. Zoning text amendment ordinance number 12 dash 2018 proposes to amend Section 28 dash 234 of the zoning code by changing the residential density of the downtown mixed-use smart code downtown sub-district from maximum of 20 dwelling units per acre to 30 dwelling units per acre to conform with the proposed comprehensive plan amendment policy 1.21.1. The Florida Department of Economic Develop, Development, DEO, and associated reviewing agencies have reviewed the proposed text amendments and do not have any comments at this time. This is your second reading, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Busaka, any comments? Counsel, any questions? See none. Okay, go right ahead.
Could you just explain a little bit why they, why you're recommending changing the 20 to 30? Is that to go with what you were saying earlier about smaller lot sizes, or?
This is actually, um, a couple of reasons. One, in order to get a vibrant downtown, we're going to need people living there. The, and one way to do that is to increase the density because you're going to have, it's going to be a little bit more expensive to develop, you're either going to have to redevelop an existing building, as in the Cafe Chocolate building, or you're going to have to, um, do some additional development because those old buildings take more effort. And so, the way to make that work is by, to increase the density. Now, when we did our economic development plan, the suggestions were that the density go much higher than 30 units an acre, but we didn't think that at this time, that that was probably too big a step, and so we wanted to start with this. But this is one way that we're going to get, to see people living downtown, is to give some additional densities.
Any other questions of staff? Uh, clerk, are there any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Uh, close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion? Anyone like to? See none. I'll accept the motion.
I would move to approve comprehensive plan amendment 2017 dash 02, ordinance number 11 dash 2018, and zoning code text amendment ordinance number 12 dash 2018.
I have a second?
Second.
I think, uh, I'm Mr. Stokel.
Richard, you, do you want to do these separately, or do you want to do them all as one?
They could vote on the motion as presented, which included both ordinances.
So you want to, do we need to change the motion, then?
No, sir, I believe the motion is fine, you'll just need a roll call vote.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
That would be Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Next item is Item J. It's easier when you're on the right page, by the way. Uh, city manager?
Yes, sir, this is Item J. Actually, at this time, I'll, according to the agenda, I'll read the quasi-judicial rules of proceeding.
Okay.
During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table in the back of the council chamber. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council, staff representatives, and such other representatives as authorized by the council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have all persons wishing to speak for the city council signed an oath card?
Yes, sir.
If there's anyone present who has not signed a card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited any of the sites or spoken to any members of the public regarding a quasi-judicial item to be reviewed?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
Item, sir, Item J is small-scale amendment number 5, 2017, with the rezoning ordinance for 1915 Buffalo Road. This includes ordinance number 13, 2018, ordinance number 14, 2018, and I'll read the ordinances at this time. Ordinance number 13, 2018, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville, by changing the land use designation on an approximately 1.1 acre portion of a property located at 1915 Buffalo Road, from the residential to future land use designation to the industrial land use designation and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 14, 2018, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993, of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference, by replacing the present rural residential RR zoning to light industrial services and warehousing M1 zoning on approximately 1.1 acre portion of a property located at 1915 Buffalo Road, providing for an effective date.
The Planning and Zoning Commission acting as a local planning agency, recommend approval of this action, 4-0. The applicant, Mike Catrick, owner, is requesting to expand the industrial land use on approximately 1.1 acre portion of a property located at 1915 Buffalo Road onto vacant residential land. The property is currently designated with two different future land use designations and zoning districts. Currently, the eastern portion, approximately one-half, is within the industrial future land use designation and light industrial services warehousing M1 zoning, and the western portion, approximately half, is within the residential to future land use designation and rural residential RR zoning. The applicant is requesting to change the order to place the entire property within the future land use designation and zoning district in order to allow the property to be better utilized. Staff has prepared items that support the request, as well as items that do not support the request as part of your packet, as part of your packet for consideration. This is the final public hearing for SSA application 5 dash 2017. Staff's available to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, Mr. Busaka, any comments on this?
Yes, this one is, uh, difficult, and, uh, perhaps some history would assist you. The industrial uses in this area occupy buildings constructed in the mid-sixties, 1960s, and the single-family homes along Buffalo Road were constructed in the mid-1950s. The homes along Melinda were constructed in the early 1960s. Zoning was not applied in the city until 1964. So, these use, many of these structures, the uses predated zoning, which is why you see this unusual mix of industrial right up against residential. The intent of the request is to allow one parcel, which at one point were, was two separate parcels, but was combined, and has split zoning. Currently, the property that's on the residential side, on the western portion, does not meet the minimum lot requirement, minimum lot, um, requirement for, lot width of the land development regulations, and would require a variance to create a buildable lot in order to put in the single-family residence. The industrial side, on the east side, does meet all of the minimum lot requirements. The policies that staff reviewed, while policy 1.8.1 relates to having access on US-1, a major corridor, the subject property does not directly abut US-1, however, the overall industrial district is adjacent to you- However, the overall industrial district is adjacent to US one, and what the applicant is requesting is an extension of this district. In addition, Buffalo Road does provide direct access to US one. There is an unsignalized full median opening at the intersection of Buffalo Road. There are no roadway levels of service issues, and there's available capacity for water and sewer. The proposed expansion is part of a cluster of industrially-zoned properties, and the Code of Ordinances and Land Development Regulations establishes minimum thresholds for noise, lighting, smoke, fumes, and visual impacts. However, with this mix, there is a potential to cause nuisances to the adjacent residential areas. The Land Development Regulation establishes minimum standards for buffering industrial uses from residential uses. At a minimum, the industrial use would be required, a ten-foot landscape buffer plus a six-foot-tall opaque screen, which could include a hedge, solid wood, or masonry walls. Some uses within the M-one zoning district could also require additional setbacks or screening. The city's comprehensive plan does not currently prescribe or require transitional uses between the industrial and the residential. Now, while I think I told you the last time that that is what we consider good planning practice, there is nothing in the comprehensive plan that can identify a transitional use as required. On page three-eleven and three-twelve of your agenda package, there has been given items which both support the proposed request and items which do not support the proposed request. In determining this, where council will be asked to determine which of these items, either the ones in support or the ones that are not support, they feel are the most applicable in this situation, and that would be the determination made to support the change to the land use. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions from council? I see none. Clerk, are there cards on this item?
Yes, sir, we have quite a few cards.
Quite a few cards. We'll start with the first one.
Mike Catrick?
At this time, I'd like to make reservations, speak at the end of the presentation for rebuttal. I distributed a package that has some pictures and picture of the zoning of the property, a map of it. Everybody received that? Hello, my name is Mike Catrick. My wife and I are both long-term residents of the Titusville MEMS area and are long-term business and property owners in the city of Titusville. We are the owners of the two-acre parcel located at nineteen fifteen Buffalo Road in North Titusville, has been unique, that has a unique issue of having two different zonings on the same piece of property. Whatever time that they're purchased and put together, that was long ancient history, back before Dr. Story owned the property, back in the sixties, about the same time all those zoning stuff had happened. The east side of the, the east side of our property is currently zoned M-one, while the, while the west side is RR one, rural residential one. Like she had mentioned, that we do not meet the one-hundred-and-twenty-five width requirements for RR one. That's not my intention to go RR one anyways. The property doesn't meet its current designation, so therefore, that's why I feel the zoning issue needs to be addressed one way or the other because it's not developable the way it is, and that's why it's been sitting in limbo for a number of years. This is the reason why we're asking to request to shift the M-one designation west by the one hundred feet, which is half of my property. It's only one hundred feet west. We're looking to move this line to be able to utilize the entire property as a whole. Eight of the ten properties located on Buffalo Road, which we have frontage on, are zone M-one. There are two residential properties on Buffalo Road, and that's it. The rest is all M-one. Everything from north of us and east of us is industrial. And the road frontage is where it's zoned M-one. This is, this is one-hundred percent consistent with the competitive, the comprehensive growth plan, the economic development plan, and established industrial character of this general area that we're speaking. I'd like to go over some of the highlights of the Planning Department staff report on this matter. Please keep in mind, Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved this request after a lengthy debate and in, and input from us and neighbors. It was quite a long event, but nonetheless, they approved it unanimously. It was over. I'd like to go over the staff report at this time. I don't know if you have a copy of that for the property. The background information, the applicant, Mike Catrick, owner is requesting to expand industrial land use on approximately one-point-one acre portion of a two-acre property located at nineteen fifteen Buffalo Road onto vacant residential land. The property is currently designated with two different future land use designations and zoning districts. Currently, the eastern portion, we've already gone over that, so I'll just move on. The applicant is requesting a change, the change in order to place the entire property within one future land use designation and zoning district in order to allow the property to be better utilized. The usability, the usability of the subject property, currently this property could not be developed with the allowable uses within the RR one zoning. I refer back to page six, item seven, line twenty-six through twenty-eight on that. The portion of the property zoned RR one is approximately a hundred feet wide by four-hundred-seventy-five foot deep. My other piece of property is approximately the same hundred foot wide, not quite that deep. So it's, we're talking about some really long rectangular-shaped pieces. If they're individual, as one whole, they're two-hundred foot wide by four-hundred and something foot deep, so it's more of a rectangular. But individually, they're pretty much very odd-shaped, and nothing could be done with each side of the zoning. Both of these pieces have the same address, which is nineteen fifteen Buffalo Road. The comprehensive plan, policy one point eight point one, while the subject property does not directly abut US one, the overall industrial district the applicant is requesting to expand is adjacent to US one. Additionally, Buffalo Road does provide direct access to US one, and there's an unsingle full medium opening on US one at the intersection of Buffalo Road. And US one is less than two-hundred feet away from this property, from this property down Buffalo Road. It's immediately up Buffalo Road. Policy one point eight point two, the subject property is located on Buffalo Road. This half is approximately four feet, four-hundred feet from US one. No roadway level of service issues have been identified, and there is available capacity in both Buffalo Road and US one. Water and sewer, sewer service is available to the property. Solid waste service is also available to the property. One point eight point three, while there is no overall master plan for industrial use of this, in this area, there is a developed, developed cluster of industrial uses, many of which occupy structures built over fifty years ago and established in the industrial zoning in the area. The proposed expansion is part of a cluster of industrial zoned properties, as noted above, utility infrastructures available to serve the property. As explained in usable, usability of the subject property above, the property is currently designated with two zoning districts. That's, that's repeating, I'm not going to go back there. The land development regulations establish minimum standards for buffering industrial uses and residential uses. At the minimum, these requirements require a ten-foot landscape buffer plus a six-foot-tall OPEG screen, a hedge, a solid wall, masonry wall, et cetera. Some uses within the M-one zoning district also require additional setbacks or screening when adjusted to, adjacent to residential uses. So there are stipulations in, in the system to allow this and to have the setbacks and such required. The compatibility of the existing zoning and proposed zoning, the comprehensive plan, land development plan regulations generally discourage locating industrial designation, designations adjacent to residential designations due to nuisance, the nuisance issues such as traffic noise, et cetera. The subject property is considered, is currently bisected with residential designations on the west and industrial designations on the east. Once again, we're only moving a hundred feet, and these conditions already exist. We're not creating a new anything. We're just, once again, moving, shifting the line over. That's what we're requesting. Although the expansion of the industrial designation could be considered as encroaching into residential area, the proposed designation is clustered with the other industrial usage, which is encouraged by the comprehensive plan along Buffalo Road and Childry Avenue, many which have been in place for over fifty years. The property is located in the city's urban service area, and the land use change will not endanger agricultural conservation, conservation or areas of open space. Once again, water and sewer is available to the property. The rezoning, chapter thirty-four procedures to list the review criteria under the Planning and Zoning Commissions and the City Council Review Applications as they relate to zoning. The staff made the following findings.
Sir, can I interrupt you one second? Just so everybody understands, he's the applicant. He can speak additional time.
Okay. Consistent with the comprehensive plan, whether the applicant is consistent, these conditions already exist, so the fact that it was consistent, it's there. The future land use sites for industrial development shall be located with a convenient access to major transportation corridors. Once again, we're two-hundred feet off of US one on Buffalo Road. Buffalo Road is a road that used to service dock high storage. There were semis that were coming and out of there all the time. We're not looking for that kind of road traffic whatsoever. But nonetheless, Buffalo Road has supported that kind of traffic for years. And once again, it would be clustered in limited areas for maximum employment centers and convenient access to labor supply, raw material sources, and market areas. Industrial development shall be encouraged to be master planned to share infrastructure. Staff comment, the project will require to meet concurrency-related level of service standards prior to approval of the site plan, water and service available. There's adequate existing improved public streets. Land will support the proposed development. This is all out of the staff report. The environmental impact of the proposed rezoning, no wetlands have been identified in this property. The property is mainly cleared with small areas of native vegetation. Any alterations to the property will require a site permit consistent with LDRs. The consistent zoning, if deemed consistent with the comprehensive plan, shall be presumed correct unless substantial change in areas occurred since original zoning. Not much has changed in that area since the fifties and the sixties. There's, we have four houses in the general area right there. They're zoned, actually, they're single-family residents. To give an idea how bad the zoning is, they're actually M-one zoning. There are the ones, I'll go through the package that we had worked, actually, I'll get to that in a second. I'm sorry, I'm getting out of place. There are substantial reasons why the property cannot, cannot be used in the existing zoning district. The portion of the property within the M-one zoning district appears to meet the minimum zoning standards of lot size and width. The western portion, once again, the RR one does not meet the requirements for the size because it's not quite big enough. The summary and recommendations from the planning, from the, from the city's staff report, the items that support the proposed request eliminates the split land use in zoning designations and creates more options for development configurations of this property. It co-locates additional industrial land with existing industrial zoned properties to the east, which is encouraged by policy one point eight point three of the comprehensive plan. It locates additional industrial land within close proximity of US one, which is encouraged by the comprehensive plan. It locates additional industrial land in an area already served by water and sewer infrastructure, which is encouraged by the comprehensive plan. Now, there are three things that are mentioned that do not necessarily support it. It allows intense uses of industrial nature adjacent to existing similar, it allows intense uses of industrial nature adjacent to existing single-family residence uses, which may potentially cause a nuisance. Well, this condition already exists because we were, the other half is zoned M-one. Has a potential use to cause undue hardship, pretty much the same thing as the first statement. Once again, that condition already exists because the other half is zoned M-one. The thing that is mentioned, the second item that they mentioned is the property does not have direct access to a major transportation facility, but they addressed it previously stating that it's within a couple hundred feet from US one on a road that does service, you know, Buffalo Road, which does serve to US one. The maps, the, the maps and photos I distributed, on the front page, there's a blue line that comes down through everything. That is actually the line that separates the zoning from M-one to RR one. The property in the orange in the center is my piece of property, which comes right down the middle and splits it in half. Those four lots that have got green dots on them, those are the ones that the residential, single-family, single-family residences on M-one zoned property. So we do have quite the mixed match of zoning going up that way. Then we flip to the next page, there's another little map with a bunch of numbers on it. Those are, I've, I've got some photos that are enclosed in the back of it. That's where those photos are taken for each one. I was trying to show and coalition to our property where they're located at. We'll go to, just go through the pictures real quick. Photo number one is a, is a picture of the frontage of our property along Buffalo Road, which is approximately two-hundred feet wide. We have the, we have the fence across it with the OPEG material on it. And as you can see from the, from the picture, we've held the property line, we've held the fence back on the property line considerably around the entire property. The front, we're about forty feet. On the west side, we've held it back to help out one of the neighbors because they had restricted area to get, because his house was running on a property line. We held it back thirty feet on the west side. And on the east side, there's a, there's a road that cuts back, allows access to two of those homes that are in the zone, M-one zoned area. It's a little twelve-foot-wide easement that's cut through. We basically tripled that to allow access because the city garbage trucks go down there. And there's no way if we kept it to twelve-foot wide and fenced up to it, there'd nobody be able to get in and out of it. So we basically tripled that. But anyhow, on the photo number two, that is, that is a picture of the, the access area, the little dirt road that we, and actually, that dirt road is on our property. We held the fence back another, as I said, twenty-five feet off of our property line to, instead of pushing, having to relocate that road back to where it's supposed to be. That's, the whole thing is on the property. And then on photo number three, this is Melinda Lane from US one. We will be adding zero traffic to Melinda Lane. We have no business on Melinda Lane. The, everything is north of on a Buffalo Road, which has the same access. Actually, it's an easier intersection to get in and out of than Melinda Lane on the US one. If anything, the, the individual that's buying the property owns a commercial repair, auto repair facility on the corner of Melinda and Childry. And he's planning to use this facility, the property from us, to use for overflow parking, the parking of vehicles. So he's going to be, as it is now, using the portion of it that is zoned M-one to park the vehicles at during the day to relieve some traffic issues at intersection because it's very busy. Not busy, but it's just crowded. Then we go to photo number four, the first house coming down Melinda on the left-hand side. I'm not sure what the story is with this house. Doesn't have a driveway. I've been living here in Titusville for better part of forty years. And I've never seen anybody, I've never seen that house occupied. I don't know what the story is with that one. But it's the very first house, and that one is actually zoned RR one. Doesn't even have a driveway, and there's no, no activity at that house. Number, photo number five, this is Melinda Lane, looking north on Childry. This is basically looking down Childry Avenue, where most of the industrial work is in that area. On the left-hand side, there's Rice Auto Repair. We have Mo Muscle, a tree trimming and landscape facility. Then past that's Atlantic Storm Protection on the left. As you come down the right-hand side, there's the Ginu Shop, Custom Glass Works, where they do custom Ginu work. Past that is a series of automotive repair facilities. And then past that, on the right-hand side, is Brits Air Conditioning, which is, and then beyond that is a pet crematorium that's on the corner of Buffalo and Childry. They cremate little pets and such there. And picture number six, that is this Atlantic Storm Protection Building. This building is also owned by my wife and myself. We have significant investment in this property, and we would do, would not do anything that would potentially hurt the property values in the area. We plan on keeping this property for, as an investment for the rest of our lives. We have no intention of selling that or the acre that's part of it. And this directly abuts the back, the side of the property that we're trying to have rezoned. Sets aside of it. Photo number seven, that's Brits, Brits Air Conditioning. That's a, that's an active business and employs over thirty-five people. Then we flip to page eight, and we have the little pet crematorium there that's on the corner. They, that place is fairly active. They probably run the, I don't know what you want to call them, the burners, three or four times a week. Doesn't let out terribly offensive smell, but it is there. I don't see anybody wanting to do residential development in this area. Not saying that's the only reason, but there's, that's something that would be a positive aspect for the residential part of it. Then we go back to page nine, and that is on Buffalo Road, looking down Childry from the other end. As you can see, this is a very industrialized area. There's a few residential homes in there, but most of those are on Melinda Road, which we don't, we have no business on Melinda. The back part of our property backs up to the back part of the backyard in the Melinda. That's why Melinda's been mentioned by me several times. And we go to page ten, that is coming down Buffalo Road off US one. It kind of gives you an idea of the size of the road, the condition of the road, the, the general area. That first little house there on the right-hand side, that is one of the houses that is zoned M-one, that is a single-family residence, which is vacant. Picture eleven is another one of the homes that are zoned M-one, that's single-family residence. There's somebody living there. He's actually quite friendly with us. And then number, picture number twelve is the only occupied single-family home that is zoned RR one on Buffalo Road, to my knowledge. It is the one that actually abuts the back corner of the, the east, the west corner of our property, abuts this property. The business community in the area, in this area of Titusville, along Childry, Buffalo Road, and US one have seen substantial growth in business activity over, over the past few years. In this general area, there has been no growth in residential area, however. Actually, twenty percent of the houses within five-hundred foot of my property are vacant or and/or abandoned and in disrepair. and in disrepair. And that's, I've got on my map, I've got it noted which ones, or if anybody really cares to see that, I've no, that's not a problem for me, I was just making that note. On Childery alone, we have Brits Air Conditioning that has 35 employees, Atlantic Storm Protection has seven employees, Rice's Auto Repair has six and is growing. Mo Muscle Tree Service has eight employees, the Ginu Shop has five, and they plan to add two more this year. And then there's numerous auto repair shops, Window Ten Establishment that occupy the small storage facilities, and they have 10 to 15 people there. And once again, that's with Brits' 35 folks. The RR1, half of this two-acre lot, for years housed a 2,200-square-foot warehouse, is a, and this is the side that we're working to get rezoned. From the early 70s through 91, this property is owned by Dr. Story, and at one time it housed a canoe manufacturing facility and a cabinet shop called Cabinet Works. They were active businesses for a better part of 20 years in that area. Then in 1991, Titusville Marina bought the property, and it became a warehouse for Titusville Marina until a suspicious fire destroyed the building in 96. Ironically, out of all this activity that's happened on this property, there's never been a single-family residence, there's never been a residential prop, house on this property. It's always been commercial property on it, the zoning just did not reflect it. After it cleared the fire debris, that left the slab, and that's the property was left in that disarray from about 96, 97, up and through 2013 when we bought it. It was in foreclosure when we bought it. It was pitiful, for lack of any other word. We had eight, I believe it was eight semi-loads, yes.
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, but we don't need it in that detail.
Okay, it was, it was, there was eight tractor-trailer loads of debris that we had hauled off out of there. It was, it was physically a dumping ground. There was construction debris, household trash, roofing materials, yard wastes, and then tree cuttings. Since we've owned it, we've cleared, we've cleaned all the debris off of it, we've cleared, we keep it clean, cleared in mode. We've put video surveillance on it right after we bought it, and last year there was a six-foot chain-link fence installed around the property, which is in the pictures, so we're, to assure that we'd have no issues on the property. There are stipulations in place to allow for different types of zoning to coexist as businesses in M1 and RR1, that's, that's there. And the business, the individual that's buying the business, Mr. Rice, his family, and I've known, been tight for 40 years, we went to school together with his father. We both have got businesses that have been in the area for years. We have respectable businesses, but there's no reason to suspect that we're going to do anything goofy or squirrely on this. His intention is to use it for outdoor storage and for parking. That being said, that would allow 75-foot easement from, from the outdoor storage to the residential property lines. So the fact that we're moving, requesting to move this line over 100 feet, in reality, it's only 25 feet, because a 75-foot's going to be an easement, we're not going to be able to, we're not going to do anything with it, just leave it vacant. And we're going to maintain it, of course, but there's not going to be any growth on that. In summary, all concerns of the RR1 and M1 coexisting are already there, and they already exist. We're simply asking to move the property line over 100 feet to the west. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have at this time, to the best I can, if I missed anything.
Staff, I mean, council, any questions for the speaker?
Yes, two.
Go right ahead.
Mike, let me ask you, make sure I understand. So right now, you're talking about taking this property and it would become outdoor storage?
Correct.
Correct. You would sell it to the Rice's and?
Correct.
They would run it as outdoors?
As, as, I am, I am working to try to get the zoning changed before the sale of the property. After the sale of the property, it'd be up to the ability to take it from there and take, and bringing it to comprehensive plans and such for whatever requirements are to use, for property use that he wants to use with it, but that is, that is the plan.
And you're saying there would be a 75-foot setback?
Correct. From residential property, when you do outdoor storage, staff could correct me, there is a 75-foot easement between whatever's being stored outdoors to the, to the residential property line.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If I could, it's, it wouldn't be an easement, it would just be a setback.
I'm sorry for, yeah, thank you. I'm new at this.
You're doing good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't, no.
You don't know?
No, no more, no other questions.
Okay. Member Stokel.
Yep, thank you. That was a lot of information.
Hope I didn't lose everybody.
No, no. I have a couple of questions, some that may be for you and some for staff. When was the actual zoning, when did that actually happen? What year?
1964.
1964, okay. So it was used as kind of industrial?
It was from, from the early 70s and through 96, yes.
Even though it was zoned residential, I guess?
Yes, just, just as those single-family residents are being occupied, they're zoned M1, yes.
Yeah, because that was, that was my other thing, that was kind of weird. I'm seeing a house here in an industrial zoning, okay.
It's almost, if you look, it's kind of hard to see from this picture, but as they came through with the swath, they just kind of drew a line and swathed it through. At that time, how much of it was occupied and how much of it was really important because they're just breaking ground on zoning, I have no idea. Obviously, the detail wasn't there because, not just this property, because it, there's nothing on it now, but there's, the single-family homes are right there, there's four of them that got zoned at M1.
Right.
So I mean, it's obvious that there was, you know, kind of a melee.
And then you own this property that's highlighted in orange here, plus the property on Childery?
Yes, if you're looking at the, the map.
Mm-hmm.
Get to the same page with you. The cover page where it says M1, to the right of it, there's three pieces of property, or mine, that where it says M1, that's where Atlantic Storm Protection resides at.
Okay. So if this is not turned into a storage facility, does that 75-foot setback still in place, or now if something else comes in here under industrial zoning, could it be a lesser setback?
It could, yes. The minimum setback in M1 is, oh, I just had it here, it is 25 feet on the front, 10 feet on the side, and 20 feet to the rear. And then, as I said, there is a 10-foot vegetated buffer and a six-foot barrier required.
And then you said, I think, you wanted to extend it 100 feet west, is that correct?
Correct, you had to incorporate the entire piece of property as one zone.
Okay, so 100 feet west is that entire area?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's kind of hard to see in this photo, actually, it's impossible to see, but we're, from the west side of it, we held the fence back, in the one photo you can see, at least 30 feet. And then it's wooded, the portion where it says RR to the left of my property, that's all vacant land. We met with the homeowners along Melinda last year, had a little meeting with them at the city, at City Hall, and their concern was that there was homeless folks living on that vacant piece of land, and because it's all wooded, you couldn't see what's going on. Ours is clear, so you could see somewhat, but since we bought it, we made sure it was clear, so you could keep an eye on everything. They requested us if we could put a fence up to, on the property to keep those people from roaming back and forth across that lot, which we did. And actually, the furthest south in the defense, you can't even see it on here, but there's a gray area, if you want to say that, on the survey. The neighbors went out, met us, we went ahead and pulled the fence back beyond that gray area on our property, because once again, our intent is to not utilize that bottom 75 feet anyway, so.
Okay. And then, Ms. Bisaka, is there, that you know of, anything that could be built on a piece of property that incorporates these two different types of zoning?
No, ma'am.
Okay. That's it, that's what I thought, okay. I think that's all the questions I had right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Just one. Okay, so we're talking about a 25-foot setback in the front, correct? And a 20-foot setback in the rear, plus 10, plus your, what do they call it? 10 feet of landscape plus a six-foot tall screen.
If I could interrupt you, the 10-foot landscaping could be within the setback. The building, we're talking a building setback. Except in the case of outdoor storage, in which case there's a 75-foot use setback.
Which we're very comfortable with, because that would allow, we want, we want to keep peace with the neighbors. We've attempted to meet with them several occasions, and lately, we've been, haven't had much luck.
Okay.
I see no other lights, so thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do I have, I heard, do I have a chance to question other people? Did you mention?
You have a rebuttal, not a question.
Okay, okay, very good, I was, I misunderstood that, thank you.
It's okay. Clerk, please call the next card.
Monica Ketrick.
Hi there, how are you?
I am the wife of the talented, should have been a lawyer, Mike Ketrick. Very detailed.
Or an orator, I'm not sure which.
We would, we'd have, we'd probably not be here if he'd been a lawyer. But my name's Monica Ketrick. My husband, Mike, and I previously owned Atlantic Storm Protection at 640 Childery Road, and we also own the two acres behind it, at 1915 Buffalo. We sold that business three years ago, but continue to own the property, including those two acres that's being discussed tonight. My purpose in speaking to you this evening is not only to ask for your support in rezoning this land that's been sitting unused for nearly 20 years, nearly useless as it is, but to give you an idea of who you're dealing with here. I say this because we attended the planning and zoning meeting, and a lot of things were said, and I know it can be an emotional thing, but I thought it was important for you to know. Mike and I both grew up in the Titusville and Memes area, going to elementary school, middle school, and high school here. Actually played basketball for Coach Deasley, probably doesn't remember me, it was a short little period, and my father coached him at Jackson Middle School. Joe Kern, anyways. We worked our first jobs here and went to BCC, previously known as BCC, here. We both have continued to work and live in this area because we love this area. Our children have moved, and they're like, why do you spell it? We love this area. We, because of that, one of our priorities has always been about keeping our home and our property neat and tidy. We try to represent what we expect from others. I work in the public school system, and Mike is the manager of our property. We worked hard to be able to purchase this property and to keep this property. We're not a large conglomerate, we're not rich. We, we're, we're not trying to take away something from the citizens in this area. We have been collaborating with the local residents in order to find ways to meet in the middle, so that this land can become usable and useful to the community. We have worked together with Billy Rice at Rice Automotive, who is intending to purchase this land to meet the demands of the neighbors, or to simply show respect to the neighbors by building the fence 25 to 35 feet off the property line, in order to prevent crowding of the road that enters private land in front, by meeting with them last May to discuss their concerns for rezoning, and by asking them two weeks ago, at the planning and zoning, what we could do to make them more comfortable with the rezoning, which were, by the way, completely snub, they weren't interested in discussing. My point in this matter is simply to say, approve this rezoning effort, the property and area will be much better for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
I believe it's Nicholas.
Yeah, sorry if I got sloppy and ran. Yes, my name's Nicholas Good. I've known Mike for a while. I also grew up less than a block from that piece of property. I've been in and out of the area. It's been industrial since I've lived there, I'm 25 years old, and I've lived in the house a block from there for 23 years now. Ever since I've been there, like you said, whatever was there burnt down 20-some years ago, so since then, it's been empty. The, I mean, really, I don't see why the property line separated it between residential and industrial, and why the residential property would be behind an industrial area, anyway. Really, the only thing that I have to say is that if it was an industrial zoning, it would make use of the property more than it would a residential property. And that's all I have to say. Any questions?
I see none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next card, please, clerk.
Gerald Smith.
Good evening, my name's Gerald Smith. I am the owner of Atlantic Storm Protection at 640 Childer Avenue. I have owned that business since July of 2015, and in that timeframe, what I've seen on Childer Avenue and where my property backs up to, mine's actually owned by Michael as well, but it backs up to that empty lot, is I've seen all the businesses in that area grow. I'd like to continue to see economic development in that area. One thing that Michael said that was incorrect about my business, Atlantic Storm Protection, he said it now has seven employees, we're actually up to about 15 employees, and we're continuing to grow. I've seen Mo Muscle, my next-door neighbor, grow. I've seen Rice's grow, I've seen the other businesses in that area grow and be successful, and I want to continue to see economic development. And I think that allowing this zoning change to occur is going to help Billy Rice continue to grow his business, continue to provide more jobs in that area, continue to allow for the development of Titusville and the growth of our small businesses, which are going to support the environment, or support the city, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions? I'm sorry, I should have asked that. I see none, thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Billy Rice.
Hi, my name is Billy. I'm, I felt I needed to come up here and talk, being the purchaser of this property, and obviously, I'll have a say-so in the future. I own, like I said, 620 Childery Ave is my shop. I purchased it in 2014. We've grown, I've doubled in trucks, doubled in equipment, doubled in employees in this time. Just kind of, I'm busting at the seams. I don't, you know, sometimes we have to park in the road for a few minutes while we're jockeying some stuff around, you know, to get a vehicle out, or, you know, a truck mainly, our trucks and whatnot. We're just, just looking to kind of be respectful, more respectful of the neighborhood, and just kind of keep the roads unclogged up and grow, so.
Any questions?
Anything I can answer, being the purchaser.
Don't see any questions, thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time, guys.
Next card, please.
Justin Lawrence.
Justin Lawrence. I'm an employee of Billy Rice, and like he said, we're trying to grow. We have grown. I've been there for two years now, and when I started, we were at three employees, and now we're at six, two years. So the property will definitely help us by not clogging the roads, as we do when we're unloading and everything else it is, and we are on the neighborhood side. We get on the property, on Buffalo's side, we're away from everything. So trying to keep the peace, we're trying to be as polite and respectful to everyone as possible. So, and like I said, we're trying to grow, we're a family business, and we need more room. So, thank, any questions?
Mike, I got to say that. Any, any questions? No.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next card, please.
It's Marge, it's K-U-T-S-C-H-E.
Correct.
I'm Joe Delancy, and I live at 550 Mendel Lane, Titusville. In 1959, we bought the program, I bought the program from White Sands down here, and I built it, had a bill, a house build it, corner of Mendel, Melinda Lane. The property that I later renamed as a county, as the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Childer Avenue, was vacant land, was supposedly a playground, some future playground for the kids in our neighborhood, and at worst, townhouses. Unfortunately, Mr. Childery came along and decided that he wanted to rezone that property, he bought it, the Childery Avenue property. And he presented it to the county commission, and there was a petition of the residents and the people of Titusville, 252 signatures, that said, do not change that zoning to what he was asking for, BU2. Mr. Childery had two, two of the three members that voted for it were former partners and associates in his business. And over the objection of the members that signed the, the people that signed the petition against the zoning, Mr. Childery got a zoning. And they built the first half of Childery Avenue on the east side of Childery Avenue. Now subsequently, it came along that he was putting warehouses in there, but over the time, period of time, the property started creeping more and more. And if you look at the map, you have pot after pot after pot of the creepage of Childery Avenue. In other words, it was destroying the residential zoning. And the creeping of that is what is problem today. Now, the people that bought this property, that we're talking about rezoning, bought residential property. The only reason they bought that property was to make money. Now, Joe Fowler came along under the 1960s. Now, Joe Fowler came along under the 1968 ordinance change and built the body shop that we're talking about here. And if you'll allow me, Mr. Mayor, I'll present two pictures, if I may present it to the council.
Yes, sir.
What happens? If you look at land use plans, land use unfortunately, in my experience as a commissioner, the land use usually follows zoning, and it shouldn't. In other words, if you have the highest and best use and appropriate use of property, when you make a land use plan, unfortunately, people have a tendency, commissioners and council, have a tendency to make the land use commensurate with what the zoning is already. And that's not the proper use of land. Land use, the highest and best use of land.
Sir, would you like additional time?
Yes, if I could, please.
You can. How long do you think it'll take?
About two or three more minutes should do it.
Three minutes?
Yeah, two, fine. The worst, the worst zoning you could pass-
Sir, we have to vote on it, sir, excuse me. We have to vote on it, give me a second.
I'd make that motion.
We have a motion, have a motion in second, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Three minutes.
I forgot to three minutes.
Three minutes.
The worst possible zoning that you could ever put, as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner, of course, as the city made me take, is putting a bomb-making factory next to a child's nursery. Volatile material stored next to a house. Take a look at the picture. Now, Mr. Rice has got his property there, he's got wrecked automobiles lying against the fence, and a $200,000 house that Mr. and Mrs. O'Hare, the heirs, lived in for years, is now ready to be destructed. Nobody wants to live in it. And you're talking about the zoning he wants to change, he can tell you that, "I'm going to build a Taj Mahal on this," and how many times I've said as a councilman and a commissioner, and heard that what I'm going to build on there is an enhancement to the city. Once you rezone that property, whatever classification you zone it to, you can put anything in that classification, and that classification is about yay wide, with all the detriment that you can do to surrounding properties. We live in this neighborhood. These are people that want to change what our looks are in our neighborhood. We even had one outfit on Childery advertised that is the entourage of the city, the name of his business on Childery was Eyesore, huge big sign. He was proud of the Eyesore that he created across from a multimillionaire hospital. Now, I have no rags to grind with Mr., the gentleman who just spoke here about his garage, but you have automobiles now, the city itself, I understand, recently stored automobiles in the back of all these houses on Melinda Lane. We had a warehouse back there, he talked about, about the Higginbottom Warehouse, that was being used by the operator of the marina, Fred Carter. He was storing automo, he was storing engines, outboard engines, gasoline, he put in gas for them. And when Mrs. Zimmerman, who was at the back of her property, right across the street from me, called me and said, "They're putting a new roof on," I said, "They can't do it, it's, it's non-conforming." I called the city up, and the city tells me, the inspector said it got rezoned. To make a long story short, he lied to me. Okay? A year later, it caught on fire, and I'm coming home one day, and I see the black smoke pouring up, every police car and every fire truck in the city is my property. And they're saying, "You can't go in there, it's going to blow up," and there's a child's bedroom twenty-five feet from that, twenty-five feet away. And here's a man that took a legal use of it. Code enforcement? There was no code. At the last meeting I went to, and I'll shut up here in a second, last county commissioner meeting-
Excuse me, sir.
I was told very clearly that we don't have anything to do with code enforcement, we just zoned the property. So, remember that whatever you do is going to affect the lives of the people that we're talking about here, that live here all these years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please, clerk.
It's Marge.
Thank you all. First of all, I, I didn't ever hear any about more requests to meet with you all to talk. We did go to that meeting a year ago, and we both voiced our concern, and I went to the planning and zoning, and we all spoke up against this idea. As Joe said, there's, there are some vacant houses, it's because people don't want to live next to this anymore. And there's, and there is a house that he said is vacant, and he said he's never seen anybody, there were people, there are people that come and go. My main concerns are the safety, because of what can be stored back there, of people climbing over the fence, which already the fence, we appreciate the fence, but the fence has already fallen down on the area that backs our houses. We're concerned about the expansion of industry, and I'm wondering about, instead of expanding the industrial use, why not expand the residential use? And what is, and what will be the use of the land, and who's going to monitor it? Is that up to us neighbors? Because last time, I voiced some concerns, and I think it was you, Sarah, that asked, excuse me, it's getting late, I know. You asked, "Had I called the code enforcement?" I didn't even know I was supposed to, I don't know what the codes are. Is it our job as, as neighbors to police the area? I'm concerned about the increased traffic. There are Mr. Rice's tow trucks, some of his drivers are speeding up Melinda Lane, they're not even using the Buffalo Road or going the other way to US-1, they go the opposite way down the neighborhood where the children and elderly are walking. These are large tow trucks, they're going over the speed limit. I'm concerned about the decreased property values for the homeowners, which is already happening. I'm concerned about explosions, which we've heard, which I spoke again about at the last meeting. I'm concerned about what is the definition of outdoor storage? Some, some of you are alluding that it's like warehouses, but it, it sounds like it can be cars, vehicles, tow trucks, vehicles with gasoline, the mow muscle trucks, impounded vehicles, which it was being used, that the police were bringing the impounded vehicles, and that since Mr. Katrick had had the property. So, could I have a few more minutes, please?
Two more minutes? Yes.
A few more.
Three?
Okay. And so I'm concerned-
Ma'am, I have to take a vote on this before I-
I'm sorry.
I'd make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion in second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
So, I'm wondering, who will monitor all of this? Is it up to us as neighbors? I'm wondering about the upkeep of the fence, the parameter of the land use for industry next to the residence. Also, I wanted to voice a concern that our neighborhood was not notified, our whole neighborhood was not notified of this. There are a few of us on Melinda Lane that were notified of this meeting. I started calling other people in the neighborhood, they didn't know anything about it. And several of the people that wanted to come are either sick or, or had other commitments, so I'm speaking for them as well, many neighbors. And some are here that didn't want to get, get up here and speak, but they feel the same way. And the first orange card that we were invited to had the wrong date for the planning and zoning meeting. I had to call and ask, "What is this all about?" So, they sent a new card, which I received the day of the meeting. I went at the, at the planning and zoning, they mentioned something about a meeting on February thirteenth, and I was said, and I was told, "There's no need to come," that this would be where the final decision is made. But then I watched it on TV, and you called for people to speak up. Well, we were told, "There's no need to come, I would have been here." So, I'm confused about, and concerned about the concerns of the public in the neighborhood. And I, and I also want to know, have any of you all come out physically and seen the situation? Would you live in a house on Melinda Lane that's backed up to this property? Would you want to? Would you want your children to? So, and the other thing is, if you can consider a longer decision time, since our whole neighborhood wasn't even informed of this, only a few of us along Melinda Lane, that we could bring this up at a later time. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yes, ma'am. What, what year or what date did you buy the property?
Early, it's been in my family since the early sixties, sixty-five-ish, sixty-six. So, we've known Joe, Joe Delancy for that long.
Ma'am?
About as long as Joe Delancy has lived there.
He moved in about the same time as you. Thank you.
He was the first one in the neighborhood.
I'm much younger than you.
Yeah. And more beautiful.
Any questions from council? I see none, thank you, ma'am.
So, that's the concern, that so many of us have owned property there for a long time, and it's like we have no recourse. And then, if we want to move, the property value is already half of what it was, and it's going down. And it's going to go down worse, more with this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next card, please.
Richard Gate.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I live at 1955 Buffalo Road, which is just to the west of the property that we're discussing, they want to change the zoning on. I have a couple of issues. Number one, the fence was a good idea, wonderful idea, it kept some of the noise down and stuff in the neighborhood. One of the issues I have is parking vehicles back there. We're all on wells. And if we're going to be parking vehicles back there, they're dripping fluids, that's going to directly, directly impact my drinking water. My neighbor is the same way. And unfortunately, neither one of us were contacted by Rice or anybody. There was no contact made, this, the first I've heard of it, when I saw the orange sign out front about the zoning change. The other issue is, I lived there twenty-five years, and I've never heard noise from US-1. The storms that come through from the east, they were blocked by that large stand of trees that was on the property that they cleared. Now, we hear US-1. Every day, sitting in my living room, I hear US-1. This time, for the first time in twenty-five years, I've had hurricane damage on the eastern corner where those trees used to protect. They're no longer there. The wildlife that they dug up, and I've got pictures of the tractor with tur, turtle carcasses, excuse me, I get very excited about animals. Turtle carcasses hanging off the front of the tractor when they cleared the property. I've got pictures of it. I'm concerned that they're going to continue into the neighborhood. There's another, excuse me, good day to quit smoking. There's another property to the southwest, that's directly adjacent to my property, it's another acre, and it's abandoned. And I'm worried that they're going to come in there and try to turn that into something, and my property value's dropped $35,000 since they put that fence up. Now, to me, it doesn't make any difference, because I own my house, I'm going to be buried there. So, I mean, the property value's going to crap, I don't care. But it's just the idea that they're enroaching in the neighborhood. That's a residential neighborhood from me back, that is all RR1. On the south side of Buffalo, all the way back is RR1. And not one of those people were contacted by Rice. So, anyway, that's my concerns.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Go right on.
So, thank you. And because you abut, I think your moment-
Well, no, let me clarify, I don't directly abut to their property.
Right.
There's about a thirty-foot swath of vegetation-
Correct.
And then my property, so I'm not directly adjacent.
Let me rephrase that. I hear you on that, and I think I'm looking at it, so.
Okay.
I guess my question is, okay, so if it doesn't go through, the property's split in half, right? The baby split, theoretically-
Which doesn't make any sense why they did that, but that's-
Right, right, but whatever the case may be, theoretically, if they were to develop the half that is industrial, that's, that is, and I'm just going hypothetical, right?
Right.
So, they take the half that you can do on, right?
Right.
And, and, and that's, I guess that's done. Some of the same issues that you're, you're siding would still be the same issues, but it would fall within their scope of being able to do that, in my mind.
Oh, okay.
You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I kind of-
So, if half of it's, half of it, you, you develop it no different than what's on that side already, right?
Right.
It just doesn't go as far.
And that, and that's my concern, because right now, we're saying, "Okay, they can go so far, five years from now."
Right.
What happens if that goes to ten feet, and now they're behind me by ten feet? I've lost all my trees.
I guess where my, where I'm going with that is, do you have, I hear your concerns of drinking water and-
That's the main one.
Right, I get that.
Because we're all on wells.
So, theoretically, that happens anyway.
No.
If, if there are, I guess where I'm looking at is, are there any other safeguards that you feel would be appropriate in absence of just denial of?
Not that would be even within a reasonable scope of.
Okay.
I mean, not really, no.
Okay.
But the, the main issue is the noise, and the, I mean, it distresses me, because I bought that property because I had woods and trees all around me. Now, I hear the, what can I call it? The loud music? I was thinking some other words, but we hear them coming down US-1 now. I mean, that has taken away a large buffer, and not saying that I want them to try to do anything to fix that, because that's a done deal, and, and so there's no sense crying about it. I'm concerned about future. Okay, now we're talking seventy-five feet, next year, we're talking thirty feet, next year, we're talking ten feet. Next thing I know, I'm sitting in my backyard looking at somebody's tractor trailer parked in the back, in that back lot. And like I said, we're all on drinking wells, and are on wells, and that's all low-lying area. And if I, I don't know if I'm correct, but to the south of my property, I think there's a county percolation pond back there. I think there's a twenty-acre perch pond there between that and Melinda, if I, if I'm correct, I don't know, I thought there was, there may not be. But, I mean, that's where the entire area's water drains to recharge the aquifer. Now, we're going to pick up all this crap from these parked vehicles and take that with it, and put it down in the aquifer that we have to drink? And, and, and I'm not saying that there's anything they can do to fix that, but my, my concern is, we're getting closer and closer and closer. This is a residential neighborhood on the south side of Buffalo. There's five, six, seven houses back in there, and they're all RR1. The north side of Buffalo is all screwed up, they've got it half, industrial half, who knows what. But on the south side, as far as I, as far as I know, from my neighbor's property back, all those houses back in there are RR1, and we're all on wells.
Thank you.
Done. Nope.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I'd like to comment about that. Because outdoor storage, you may remember a few years ago, that the code was changed to allow outdoor storage in M1, it actually requires both a stabilized surface and a treatment, stormwater treatment, because there was a concern about the runoff from vehicles that could be stored. So, that should address the issue of the runoff and treatment of whatever type of things would come off of the vehicles.
Thank you.
Remember Nelson? Are you on there? I'm sorry. No, I remember Diesel.
It sounds like whether we, we haven't approved anything, and you've got all kinds of problems already. So, I'm not sure that there's anything that we would do as far as if we approved, if we didn't approve, or whatever, that would remedy what you've got going on. So, that's the first thing. A lot of your concerns seem to be projections, "Well, if we approve this, well, what's going to be next, what's going to be next?" At this meeting tonight, what we're going to do is worry about what tonight is. So, I just want to kind of get that set. I'm listening to all these concerns and problems, and we've got this, and we've got that. We haven't approved anything, and you've already got that. So, I, I think there's a lot of projecting going on, as far as your concerns, and the problems you have are already the problems you have from 1960, lack of zoning until 1964.
Remember Stokel?
Yep. I kind of wanted to echo that a little bit, and get your opinion on something. So, I, I feel like some of your concerns, even if we did nothing tonight, yeah, you can, if that's okay with the mayor?
Yes.
Okay. If we did nothing tonight, that piece of strip, like, can still be- If we did nothing tonight, that piece of strip, like, can still be developed industrial. So, you're still susceptible to some of the concerns that you're having if they were, but it sounds like the drinking water may be okay.
And I didn't know that.
Okay, perfect, perfect. And then, further going, and this may go back to the applicant when we discuss again, if I'm hearing correctly, if there was a way that we could guarantee this was a storage facility with a 75-foot setback, the industrial would still be developed industrial, and then we'd only be looking at 25-feet extension that would be developed? Is that correct? Okay.
Okay.
So, would that be, would you be more open to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Drinking water issue, I didn't realize there was any kind of treatment that was going on. Like I said, y'all never contacted me, so I didn't know anything about this.
Yeah.
The only other issue would be the noise.
Which is probably going to happen anyway, with that being already zoned industrial, unfortunately.
Now, you were talking about some kind of vegetative barrier?
Yes, sir. The code says that we're industrial butts, non-residential, that there is a 10-foot required vegetated buffer plus a 6-foot wall.
That would work. And if, so if this measure passes, they would put in that vegetative barrier?
Yes, sir, they would be required to do that.
Then that would pretty much take care of the problem, then?
Because they would have to come in for a site plan to show us the area where they wanted to put the storage. And then, we would make sure that they had the vegetated buffer, that they had the opaque wall or fence, and that they had drainage considerations for the property, so that the runoff would go and be treated.
Okay. I have one question, and this is kind of playing for the other side, I guess. If you pass this, how can you tell him exactly what only he can do on his property? It's his property. If it's zoned industrial, he would want to.
So, yeah, no, you bring up a good point.
I mean, that's kind of playing devil's advocate for the other side.
No, 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 and I actually asked the city manager that. So, and that, I don't know if you want to address that.
In other words, what I'm saying is, if you approve this and restrict it to a certain particular building, it's his piece of dirt. He can do what he wants with it. So, if we can address the noise and the runoff issues, then I don't really see a problem.
Right. When an applicant files for land use and a rezoning, under a rezoning application, under our code, they have an option of coming in with a concept plan as part of their rezoning application, or even a development agreement as part of a rezoning application. Then, it would be evaluated based on that, and the approval would be tied to that concept plan that would be binding. If they don't, which they don't have here, you assume the most intense use, that'll be allowed in that zoning category. But we don't have that concept plan to evaluate. We don't have, there's a process for development agreements, which is not here. But in those situations, you could tie rezoning to a concept plan if one was provided.
Okay.
But under our code, you just assume the most intense use.
Okay, so with this information, I mean, that takes care of the drainage, and if there's going to be some kind of vegetative barrier, that would, I mean, you can't stop progress as much as I'd like to, but you can't. So, and that's just, but, okay, so that pretty much cleared up all the issues.
Perfect. Thank you.
Does anybody have anyone else? Nope? Okay.
Okay, next card, please.
We have no more cards.
Oh, good. We still have the applicant to come up. I have a question for you before you start. What time did you, what time, what date did you say you bought that property?
We bought the property in 2013. We bought the Atlantic Storm Protection Building was our primary focus. The whole piece, it was a bank-owned property because it went into foreclosure, so the bank owned all...
And was it zoned the way it is zoned now?
It was zoned exactly the way it is.
Do you know how long ago that zoning?
1964. Can I approach?
No, that's all right. I believe you. 1964.
This is 1964 zoning document that I got from Trevor.
Okay.
That is how it was zoned in 1964. You see, the line just kind of comes down. It was just a random line drawn through it.
Thank you.
Rice is, the person buying the property, Mr. Rice, owns the repair facility. The repair facility is actually fairly large. It has four repair bays in it, plus a large one in the back. That being said, he has very limited parking. That is the reason for this acquisition. He needs parking area. Not going to be doing repair work on the property, any of that stuff. It's going to be done at the facility that he owns. It just can be more for parking. That's the intention for it. That kind of lines that up. These little orange cards, you guys have been doing this for 40, 50 years. Everybody gets them. Those go out the way they're supposed to. I can't imagine being an issue with that. As far as the creepage, the zoning is exactly the way it was in 1964, as per that, the way the line was drawn. A lot of those properties were mismarked, like, once again, the single-family residents were zoned M1. This piece of property had a commercial building on it. I don't know for sure, because I wasn't there in 1964, if that building was on the property, but it was there and operable in the 70s, and didn't have no, you know, no issues then. It was operable. I don't know if there was complaints made. I've got no clue. That was, I have no way of knowing that. And actually, the house that Mr. Delancey mentioned was purchased a year and a half ago in foreclosure, and it's had a blue tarp on it since the hurricane last year that leveled, that leveled, I'm sorry, damaged the roof. That's why that house isn't occupied. I have no idea if it was because it was close to the other facility, but that is the reason why. The whole roof is a blue tarp. I have pictures of the houses in the neighborhood. If they're curious as to why, the property values have dropped. I've got pictures of 15 different houses there. If you want to look at those, you could get it, form your own opinion on that. Talking about gasoline stored on property and stuff like that, I'm sure every one of you guys got a gasoline can in your garage for mowing the lawns, and your car sits in the garage with gasoline in it, got gasoline in your cars unless you're all running, driving Priuses and stuff like, then you got the explosive batteries to worry about instead of the gasoline. So, that's another story in and of itself. There's, as you well know, any business has got a system of checks and balances. There's regulations in place to monitor, to make sure all this stuff's done properly. The Rice's have been in business for, that family business has been around for a bit of 40 years. They're very familiar with the way to conduct a business. Our fence is 100% intact. I was out there today. There's no fence down. There's no pieces missing, no pieces down, hence it's 100% intact. We go out there tonight and go look at it if you'd like. There is very limited interest in residential value in that area. If I thought I could sell that property for somebody to build houses on, I would do it. I feel this is actually, I don't know if I would or not, because I feel the property's actually more suited for commercial use where it's at. The only other property that is residential, that's undeveloped by that, is the piece marked RR, which is owned by Habitat for Humanity, which is unknown what that's going to come of that, whatever it does, anything does happen. And I doubt that's going to help property values a whole lot, but explosions, I have no idea what was going on with explosions. We have never had any explosions on that property, to my knowledge, and we have video cameras monitoring it 24/7. Yes, we do. Businesses are, I can't read my notes. The businesses are monitored by many cities, county, state officials, and regulations are in place for that. Hurricane damages is, I've lived in my house for 25 years. I had more damage from this last hurricane than I've had in any previous. Nobody cut any trees down near me. The trees that have been on our property, as long as we've owned that property, we did not remove any trees since 2013. We did remove, like, once again, eight big giant loads of crap off of it, but we didn't take a tree off of the property. I have no reason to remove any trees. I'm a fan of trees. They make paper and give us something to breathe. That's, anybody have any questions, or that's about the extent of mine?
Remember Stokel?
This might be more for staff. Would you be able to share what types of construction could happen on industrial land use?
Sure. We, you can have fabricating. I don't have the list that I read out the other night, but, oh, thank you. Yes, you, it is, light industrial allows warehousing, fabricating, outdoor storage. It allows machine shops. It allows, do you have the code book? Oh, great. I can read that off.
Since we have a minute, can I say something? The piece of property that we have that is currently zoned commercial, industrial, we could put a multi-story building on it to fit any of these requirements. That is not our intent. Once again, we want to develop the whole thing and leave it fly, but we could do a multi-story building that would create a lot more havoc than what we're planning on doing.
Okay. In the M1 zoning category, we, you can have the, I have to, okay, you can have the following uses. A conditional use as an animal shelter, automobile repair is a permitted use. You can have a billboard as a principal use. You can have a car wash. A crematorium is a conditional use. A dry cleaner is a permitted use. Graphic printing and copying services is a permitted use. Ice vending machines are limited use. Mobile vendor is a limited use. Package and parcel delivery services are permitted use. The repair and service for small equipment items is a permitted use. Restaurants is a limited use. Screen printing shops is permitted. A upholstery shop and a veterinarian. In addition to that, you can have bakeries and confectionaries, bottling plants, building trade services, craft breweries, dry cleaning plants, freight distribution, and conditional use permit of a laboratory research. You can use light manufacturing uses, and a machine shop is a permitted use. In addition to that, you can have mechanical service and repair, plant nurseries, transmission towers, vehicle for hire, warehousing, welding, metalworking, and fabrication.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the lady, if you don't mind. Would you come up for just a moment? I have a quick question.
My name's Marge.
Ma'am?
My name's Marge.
Yes, ma'am. You don't have to do anything. When you moved in there, which I think you said was 19...
My brother moved in the 60s. My parents bought it in the 70s. And then, I bought it from my parents in 97.
Okay, had you been in the property when your brother bought it, or?
No, he was, and my parents, ever since.
Yeah, I was trying to see how long ago you were in contact with that property.
Oh, since the 60s, because I visited there.
Were the other homes there at that time?
Yes.
They were there?
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And you were saying the later part of the 60s, or middle of part of it?
Middle, mid 60s.
65?
About 65.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll close the public hearing, council discussion. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I think I would agree with Member Stokel. I don't feel comfortable about it right now. I think with a development agreement, I would feel much more comfortable knowing what's going to be in there, as opposed to just leaving it open-ended. I like the idea that there's a 75-foot setback if we're doing storage. And I think that provides the neighborhood with some protection.
Please, no. We're through.
So, that's sort of my thoughts.
Okay. Remember Stokel?
Yep, that's kind of what I was going to say. I'm very much for what you are proposing. I just want to make sure that we do our due diligence as a council, because, and that's why I had her read those, I would not feel comfortable saying yes, go ahead, and who knows? I feel like I trust you guys, but I just don't feel like it would be my due diligence voting up here, knowing that some of those things that she read could pop up next to some of these residents. So, I would be more than happy if you guys come back with a concept plan of what you're proposing. I would be, I would be a yes. I feel a 75, or 25-feet extension, essentially what would happen with that 75-foot setback, I feel comfortable with. I think it would help me feel better about when I see these reasons to approve and reasons to deny. I think that would kind of account for those, and that's kind of where I'm leaning at this point.
Vice, member Diesel, I'm sorry.
Let me understand what you're trying to say. We just heard what's out there now. We heard from this side that no one's buying houses because of what's out there now, and then we're referring to it as a neighborhood, and if I look at the pictures, it looks a lot different than my neighborhood. And it looks an awful lot like a, an area that's expanding. And we've heard about the jobs doubling, and we've heard about the things that are moving forward. And again, I go back, as I said earlier, we haven't passed a thing, and they're already unhappy about what's out there. So, I don't know that waiting is going to change what's already out there. So, I tend to lean towards, we tend to wait a lot. So, I'm ready to move forward in another direction.
Okay. Vice, ma'am?
Thank you. So, in looking at, number one, the space, number one, the intent of the zoning that was placed in, into this, at the end, what I see is, there was opportunity previously. So, that property had gone into foreclosure, and there was opportunity to purchase. So, as a community member, and I speak from my own, from my own experience, that I've got, I love my house. It's an older house. I live in an older neighborhood. I don't make a lot of money. I wish I did, because I would buy the property right behind it so that nobody could ever touch it. But I can't. And I know I am going to cry the day that someone goes and knocks down those trees, but I can't buy it. And that's kind of the deal, right? So, that's part of the deal. So, I am empathetic to change in the backyard, but I am also empathetic to a business and the sheer difficulty it takes to grow from three people to six. I am, I am, and as part of both our goals, our strategic goals as a community, I give value to economic development, and here's where I think as a council, there is an opportunity that I am fearful that we are going to miss and send a message, a consistent message of, we don't value small business. Because when it comes to somebody who's willing to pump in million-dollar projects, we'll do tax abatements. When the EDC makes an announcement, we're cheering up and down. We have our economic development director, who works very hard, and part of what a previous program, or still a program that we have invested in in the city, is local businesses who are trying to grow, we want to be supportive of that. We have invested money, staff time, and so on and so on. We had a business at a previous meeting come and say, we'd like to try to go. That was denied. And it was different circumstances. I get it. And here we have, again, an area that had been designated, and the transition, poor, I get it, from straight M1, like, industrial to residential, that's a hard transition, any way that you covet. And I think that because of the way that we have constructed ordinances at this point, it has also developed, so to the tune of the concern of the gentleman for the drinking water is a, I'm loud and clear on that. You have my attention on that. And I think that we, I don't think, I know, that we have ordinances in place now for development that are much different than 1960 and some change, that address safety and the security of our drinking water. I think that the buffer and landscaping, I look at just the building, the Atlantic Storm building, as it is right now, that it's painted, there's some landscape on it, there's so on and so on, which is not reflective of the rest of the businesses in the area. And so, I'm going, I look at this, this is an area that could use improvement. I think that part of the problem is that there's just stuff all over, because there's nowhere to put stuff. And if there is an opportunity for somebody to put stuff in an organized fashion, I think it will actually enhance some of the problems that exist that were, quite frankly, created a long time ago. And so, you know, is it a great situation that we find ourselves in? Not really. But I think that there's a chance to improve what we have in front of us. And I think that by allowing that property to be used, in conjunction with the ordinances we have in place for development, meets the needs to the, it's really the best situation we're going to get. So, either you don't do it, and you just deny it outright, or we move forward. In the meantime, we have a community of businesses and a community of residents, and that, you know, not to impede on the livelihood of a home, in the same sense, not to impede on business, in a time where, you know, if you're willing to go out there and put a dent in and take risk and invest in Titusville... and put a dent in and take risk and invest in Titusville, then, you know, I hope that we are supportive to that cause. So, that's my rationale, going yes to it. Because even if you don't, to his point, he's still got, you know, a four-story industrial building that he can put on there, just make it skinny, right? And that would be the other option. And that's not where I think anybody's going for either. So, I think that previous intent, that there's been intent by the property owner to show good faith. And although that can't reflect in the future, I think that that is an improvement, so that's where I'm at.
Members, no, sir. I'm sorry. It's, we're through that, and it's been closed, the public hearing. Member Stokel?
This may be more for the applicant. Would you have any objection to if we wanted to implement that, where you had to have a concept plan, and then we approved that?
If it's up to the mayor, if you can approach.
Yeah, you can come up if you're asked by a member of council.
Mayor, let me say, I'm going to be real careful. Applicants, of course, can decide to file applications with proposed concept plans or development agreements for your consideration. But you cannot tell an applicant that if you bring this concept plan before us, we will approve it. Because you can't contract away your right to legislate and to look at an item. You, if an applicant decides they want to come to you with a concept plan, you have to judge that concept plan and vote on that rezoning at a hearing. You cannot beforehand agree that you will vote a certain way based on the presentation of a concept plan. You have to vote at a public hearing on the evidence presented when that concept plan or development agreement is considered.
So, what that would look like, and I guess what I'm proposing, what it would look like would be if we got a majority up here to go along with that, it would be a denial tonight. You would come back then with your proposed concept plan of what you want to do with this property, and then we would vote to approve it. And I'm kind of with the Vice Mayor and what Member Diesel said. I'm not a fan of the waiting game. I'm not, I'm very much pro-business. And if this didn't have such, this is a hard one for me, just with the housing right there. And I'm trying to find some kind of happy compromise. So, I'd like to hear your take on that, I guess.
When we met with Trevor and Mr. Parish and the residents, I can't remember what meeting it was at, maybe it was a, we were all there, and I brought up the, because we have some property. Where we live at is in Memes, we live off of Turpentine Road. A number of years ago, RV Park came in and wanted to develop a hundred-acre parcel behind us into an RV park. We were all in open arms, it wasn't going to happen, we weren't going to allow it. And we met with them, and we wound up coming up with a binding development plan. And I mentioned that to the city, to staff, and they said that the City of Titusville does not have binding development plans, does not exist. I heard that from Trevor and from Parish. They said, you do not have a binding development plan. And that terminology.
That is correct. It's not quite the same as the county.
And all, back up to the RV park, all in all, it's been ten years. It's the best neighbors we'd hoped for. There's a buffer between us, a wooded buffer. We can't see them, we can't hear them, we don't even know they're there. It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful thing. We could have had a truck stop there. We could have had a multi, we could have had anything. At a hundred-acre parcel, they could have put in a huge facility. There's on forty-six and Turpentine Road. But it wound up being Seasons and Sun RV Park, great neighbors, worded out to be wonderful.
Good.
That's my story with it. And you saying the word denial scares me.
I know it does, I know.
Because we went through a lot to get to this point.
I know.
And I don't feel, I personally don't feel, the residents on Melinda Lane, true, they were within a certain distance of our property, but they don't see the property. They have no, they have no vision of it. They drive down, unless they drive out Children Road and around the corner to Buffalo Road to go see what's going on back there, to drive through all the industrial area, which they're so concerned they don't want to see, that's the only way they're going to see it. If you're staying on Melinda Lane, coming in and out of there, you won't go anywhere near, you won't see the front of our property, the front edge. There's woods behind it, you can't see anything behind it. It's a blank wall. And the trees mentioned by one of the other neighbors are our trees. We left the wooded barrier along that property line that's every bit of thirty feet, and then we held the fence back another thirty feet from that. So, we're almost at the sixty feet on that corner already.
So, when you first approached the city, you were trying to get a binding development plan?
We met resistance from the neighbors, so I tossed out their idea of a binding development plan. And I was told immediately, we don't have binding development plans, we can't offer that.
Okay.
I said, okay, and we moved on.
Okay. Can we clarify?
Well, I wasn't in that meeting.
She was not.
Okay.
But what I might suggest is, let, you could table this. Let the staff talk with Mr. Catrick, see what he would like to propose. If indeed he wishes to propose something, and then we could bring it back.
Okay.
That is an option. But in the county, they do a little bit more aggressive binding development plans. Here, our code talks about the fact that if you wish to include that as part of your zoning application, you may do so voluntarily. The binding development plan in the county is a little less voluntary in my experience there.
Would you be open to that?
At this point, I'm not sure where I feel on that. Because if, to tie our hands to...
Pretty much a seventy-five-foot setback.
I'm selling the property to an individual with the stipulation this we can use it for. For me, to limit to that exclusively may affect my sale. I don't know. It's not fair for me to do, to tie that to the property. Once again, we're not talking about the area that we're dealing with. True, there is residents that are involved with it, but it's not, it's a commercial area. I mean, cut through the chase, it's a commercial area. Melinda Lane, north over that way, correct. It is, I mean, sorry, Melinda Lane, east and west, that is residential. But I think north of Melinda, as you can see by the maps, it's pretty much commercial in nature. The gentleman's house happened to be one of the ones that got caught up in the zoning issue, but it's just the way that is. I don't want to say no and lose the opportunity to do this, but on the other side of that, I don't feel it's fair to put that on my buyer at this point.
Yeah, and then, so up here, then, if not, we're left with voting on changing the zoning, knowing that potentially whoever does end up buying it could do the most extreme...
But once again, there's stipulations, and there's all types of ordinances in place, whether, no matter what it's zoned or changed to, being zoned M1, no matter what's put there, it's going to have to follow the strict guidelines of what the city has put in place already. They're here just for that reason, to make, for one property butts another property, you know, so different zones can coexist. That's already in place through the city.
Yeah, it would be, I think, it would be a twenty-foot setback.
Correct, but it's in place by the city. Y'all voted on that, people, before you put that in place. I mean, it's there, there's a reason for it to be there, and it's just for this reason. So, I'm a little set back. If I had time to think about this prior to this and stood put on the spot, I might have a different attitude.
No, I know, I apologize for that.
Because, once again, I did approach staff with it, I did. And they said a binding development plan does not, they were very standoffish about it. They didn't even mention they had something similar. They said, we don't do that, it doesn't exist.
Okay. All right, I don't know if anybody else wants to share.
Okay, Member Diesel?
Yeah, I just kind of reiterate where I was before. You know, we've talked about how in the past it was supposed to be a park. There was that proposal, and, you know, it was supposed to be a park in the past. In the future, we want to say, what are you going to do? We want to know exactly what you're going to do before we do our part. We quote, we want to do our due diligence. Well, I feel like you guys have done your due diligence. The presentation you gave showed me that this wasn't, you know, done at the spur of the moment. The approval by the Planning and Zoning Board tells me this wasn't done, you know, the spur of the moment. And quite honestly, it's not like I'm hearing a group of people say, gosh, this is just, you know, paradise out here, and I wish that we could just do this and, you know, keep it alone. I know it's not going to be a park, and we have concerns about it already. Kind of as Dr. Phil says, how's it working for you now? It's not going so well now. I kind of tend to think that the zoning has screwed things up for years. There's no question. We're not sitting here right now with, well, if you do this, we're going to ruin this. It's, there's already issues out there. So, you know, I very much lean towards the moving forward. Due diligence has been done, and I won't be in favor of tabling this and moving backwards and just holding in a holding pattern again.
As painful as it's been for you guys, the Planning and Zoning meeting was about twice as long, or a portion of it, so. They had, they heard difference, and I can't speak for them. But there was a lot going on with that, too. But after it was all said and done, they had to look at the facts, and they made the decision they did based on the facts that they had. And since Planning and Zoning is the name of what they do, I kind of thought they knew what they were doing, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. And I don't expect any further comments from me on this. So, twofold. One is that Planning and Zoning, that's four-oh. And again, I come back to, I am concerned, I have a personal concern that Planning and Zoning is continuously making recommendations of five-oh, four-oh, whatever the case may be. And we are, even in this evening, in just absolute contradictory to what they're putting forth. And if it was maybe, you know, a two-three or a three, and then I could see that, but what's the point of Planning and Zoning? If what the recommendations are going to make, we're just not going to do. So, that, just one consideration. The others, as a business, and I value what the gentleman said. He's in the, is in the middle of also a real estate deal, right? So, we forget about that. If I was a, an individual listening to this, I'm getting prudence to weigh it out, I totally believe. And so, sometimes that weighing, that decision-making, you need time for. And I get that, I think that that is afforded to us prior to coming to a meeting. But I am concerned, because again, as a business, what I hear is a businessman has a problem, he needs more room. And he can do that, accomplish it one of two ways. He can continue to stay in Titusville, or he can stay Titusville pound sand and move his business. And that's not good either. And that is not a message that I want to send as well. Again, my hope would be to grow businesses that are working here, especially ones that have been transitioning or four years into it, and so on and so on. And so, with that, I'm with Member Diesel. Whatever the decision is, I hope the decision will be moved forward, and it would be done tonight, because there's time, money, and a community that's waiting for that. Lastly, I'd like to just note that even if we are to approve this, that there is an ongoing process in development plans and so on and so on. So, this isn't a one-stop, and it's done, and then go forth. There is a, although it has been streamlined due to the efforts of our director, there is a lengthy process with, I think, opportunities for oversight, specifically from council and P&amp;Z along the way. So, that's why I'm very comfortable with the idea. And if it is so detrimental to the community to cause either a risk of safety or impede the rights of the individuals through there, then I think there's opportunity to stop that at that point in time. I don't think it has to be tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? I've been pretty quiet on this part, because it is a tough decision all the way around. You certainly have your points, and you folks do, too. To me, it might be a little bit simpler, but I'll point my thinking on it. The lady said that, I think she said she moved in in nineteen sixty-five. Is that, is that correct? And there weren't many houses there at that time?
Yes, there were.
There were houses there?
All houses.
Okay, well, but you moved in there in sixty-five?
Ninety-seven.
Sir? Ninety-seven, she?
Her brother moved there in sixty-five.
Okay, well, the family bought it early on, and you moved in later. But this rezoning is nineteen sixty-four. So, and you kept asking, is it your responsibility to be, to know what's going on? Yes, ma'am, I'm afraid it is. It's called caveat emptor, emptor, means let the buyer beware. You moved into a place where what I think we have here is a case where somebody, it often happens, moved in next to an airport, and now they're complaining that there's airplanes there. All right, sir, you've had your speech. My turn. That's the way I see it, because this happened before their issues. I don't know about their neighbors, but I'll assume everybody's telling the truth here. So, that's my point of view. And if that's the case, I'd say we should go forward with this. I'll, let me go back and see where we are here. All right, closed the public hearing. Any further discussion from council? I ask for a motion.
I make a motion, small-scale amendment, number five, dash two-one-two-zero-one-seven, with rezoning, one-nine-one-five, Buffalo Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
There, just, it is small-scale amendment, number five, two thousand seventeen, but we also have two ordinances.
Oh, sorry, right.
Since this is a site-specific...
I remember that about an hour ago, but somehow I forgot it.
Yes, sir.
How do we do it, two?
It has a motion to prove. I'd go ahead, and if inclined, you would include the first ordinance, number thirteen, two thousand eighteen, vote on that, and then have a motion on ordinance, number fourteen, two thousand eighteen.
Okay, this is the first motion on number thirteen, two thousand eighteen, correct?
I need to make a motion on ordinance, number thirteen, dash two thousand eighteen, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance, number sixteen, two thousand eighty-eight.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second holds. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Now, we need the next motion on ordinance, number fourteen, dash two thousand eighteen.
Make a motion, ordinance, number fourteen, dash two thousand eighteen, amending ordinance, number five, dash one-nine-nine-three, of the City of Titusville, Florida.
Do I have, no. The second? We have a second from Member Stokel. Any discussion? All those in, roll call, vote, please.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Next item. Yes, sir. Yeah, all right, let's resume this meeting at ten o'clock. Anytime, I'll go, I'll go on the toilet.